Alrighty, I'd like to call the Village Council, our regular meeting, November 10th, 2020. I show we have a full, two order, I show we have a full quorum, including Robert Marco Lees, Councilman Marco Lees on, what do we call it, Zoom?
Web X.
Web X, and the rest of council here, so we have a full quorum. Before we get started, I'd like to make a motion, make, have someone make a motion for Councilman Marco Lees to participate virtually, so who, who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. First up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any, anything we want to add, change, or?
Yeah, so, new business, number nine, discuss and consider adoption of RS 2020 11-05, a resolution supporting the incorporation of extraterritorial municipal zoning jurisdiction into the Union 2050 Plan.
Okay, that's what I sent earlier?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, I was gonna put that on open topics, but great, thank you.
And then, I need to pull off from the consent agenda, number 12, and put that under new business, because there's some dollar amount changes that we just need to look at. So that'll be ordinance, the general fund, OR 2020 11-02, consider the adoption of that.
You're moving that to?
New business.
As number 10?
Yep.
So, except, number 10, we were removing and moving to new business?
No, number 12.
Number 12.
On the consent agenda.
Yep.
To the new number 10, on new business.
Okay.
And then, that was it.
Okay, one second here, see, 12, consent. Bob, do you have anything?
No, sir, I'm good.
Thank you, anyone else? I'd like to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, first up, we have, uh, let's believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, first up, we have on the agenda is the public comment period. I'd remind you that you, we're all giving you three minutes, uh, to, um, talk about whatever you want to talk about in your public comments. Um, you want to comment, Kim?
I've got it. Sorry, I've got them here.
Okay, so you have the list of?
I have one person signed up and I have one submitted.
Okay, and, uh...
This is general.
Okay, did you, you're the one that signed up? Okay, so, he, he's gonna be talking about, like, so may go a few, he told me it may go a few minutes, oh, not a few minutes, a few seconds after three minutes, it'll just be...
Well, I'll give you the three minutes.
Okay, alright, um, so, first up, we have, can I, just, I want to see who it is?
Bill Loughlin.
Oh, you're gonna go with, okay, Bill Loughlin, you're reading on his behalf, okay?
Yeah, I'll read, mhm.
Okay, there's more than one now, aren't you, not reading?
That's a public hearing comment.
Okay, gotcha.
And then we have the, what, what's it?
Terrific, okay, so go ahead if you want to...
Okay, so this comment is from Bill Loughlin of, what's his address? Of 1802 Summit View Place. He says, hello everyone, and thank you for everything you do in service of our community. I am a resident of Weddington Chase, going on 12 years now. I'm contacting you regarding the discussion held at your last work session about gating Weddington Chase. I want you to know that there are many Weddington Chase residents that are strongly opposed to the idea of gating our neighborhood. I am submitting this email and petition of residents opposing gating Weddington Chase, in hopes that it will be read into the record of the 11-10, 2020 Village Council meeting. In summary, we had three and a half days to collect petition signatures prior to the last work session where this was initially discussed. In that time, 113 confirmed residents responded opposing gating Weddington Chase. That represents 80 households opposing gating Weddington Chase, and a short next-door survey from October 24th indicated a two-to-one opposition. PDF of the petition results are attached, so it's a link. I hope that you will remain consistent with your previous actions over the years, and not grant or encourage pursuit of a variance or text amendment to your zoning law prohibiting gating Marvin roads, section 150.066J of the Marvin Code. Further information, this is a, this is definitely a polarizing issue, my primary concern is that there is only one side of the debate with the pulpit and the microphone right now. Our HOA conducted a neighborhood-wide safety forum on October 23rd, 2020, where the safety committee informed the neighborhood of their findings and made the recommendation to the HOA board to gate the neighborhood. They neglected to tell everyone that the topic of gating our neighborhood would be on the village work session agenda seven days later. Without getting into the details, it is awkwardly obvious that there is a small group of new neighbors and a number of HOA members promoting gating Weddington Chase under the guise of safety, when it is evident in their words and actions that it is more about increasing property values. I want to make sure that the other side has an equal opportunity to be heard. I conducted a 24-hour informal survey of our neighbors through Nextdoor, 98% of our households are on Nextdoor. The short survey indicated there is two-to-one opposition, and it included a picture of the survey. Lastly, the next day I found out that this topic would be discussed five days later at the Village Council work session. I was not sure if the village would accept the Nextdoor survey, so I created the attached petition, which I have available for you all later. Despite having only three and a half days to squeeze this in...
That's your time.
That's it.
That's it.
And the rest is in the reference.
Okay, I think you all, council, we've all received that letter in the, in the, our emails, so, I know we've all read it, but for those of you that didn't get a chance or have that opportunity, you can see that in the record. Alright, next up, we have a good friend, Anthony Berman, from the past.
Joe, can I say that sheet back?
Gates bring pass, Anthony Berman, 2712, Whiteheinz Court in Union County. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I wanted to start off by thanking each of you for your service to the village. It's a thankless, sometimes stressful job. I know, and though I wouldn't trade my experience for anything, it's very nice being on this side of the table. There are many reasons why people like us choose to get involved and to subject ourselves to sometimes not-so-nice things said about us, but the most common reason is that we just want to serve our community. Every now and then, you come across one of those rare people who dedicate pretty much their entire adult lives to public service, and when I think of an individual who has selflessly served the public for deputies, there is one name that comes to mind, Nick Dispenzieri. I am here to thank the mayor and council for proving proclamation 2020 1001 to honor the life and legacy of Nick Dispenzieri, as well as establishing November 6th as Nick Dispenzieri Day. After decades of public service in New York, Nick moved down here to retire, although that retirement was very short-lived, as less than a year after moving here, he got elected to the village council. Nick was one of the longest-serving individuals in Marvin, he served with two different mayors and 11 different council members. I was fortunate enough to serve with Nick the entire four years I was on the council, with two of those serving as his mayor pro temp during his final two years as mayor. Whether it was tough personnel decisions, controversial rezonings and text amendments, or decisions made during the purchase and development of Marvin Efrid Park, Nick always brought a calm, level-headed approach to the different issues that were brought before us. This is why, when a former mayor resigned in 2010, Nick was the obvious choice to appoint to the seat. Now, I'm going to try to say this delicately, I hear there's a running joke around here that Mayor Polino can sometimes talk a lot during meetings. Well, for those of you who think Joe makes a meeting longer, you obviously never served with myself or Lanny Openchall. Nick had to wrangle two council members who could pontificate for hours the perfect height of a blade of grass. In fact, I remember one meeting in particular, when during Nick's council comments, he said something to the effect of, "It's healthy for a council to have discussion and deliberation, but when we all agree on the purchase of a $90 weed eater, we don't necessarily need to discuss it for an hour and a half." I'm not joking. Nowhere was Nick's ability to run an efficient and effective meeting more obvious than when he was absent, and I was the one having to run them. Nick was shocked to find out that one of the first meetings he didn't run, we started at 7:00, and it turned close to 4:00 in the morning. That was me running that one. This is really one of the things I will remember most about Nick and his leadership style, not what he said, but rather what he didn't say. He was a man of few words, but when he spoke, those words meant something. Nick never took anything personally, and I can say, I don't know if he ever personally attacked anyone. He would be quick to call out people, myself included, but he would also be the first one to defend someone, myself included. The character he showed during his roughly 12 years of service with the village was a result of his decades in law enforcement, which, by the way, he had some awesome stories about his time on the job, especially when he was undercover. To Karen and their children, I want to thank you for sharing Nick with us. Serving is also a sacrifice for our family members, missed dinners, shortened vacations, hours on the phone. There will be many of us that come and go in Marvin, and we each try to do the best we can for the betterment of the community. Because of all of you, and the proclamation you adopted, Nick's time and service has been etched into the official village record books. It was an honor to serve alongside him. Thank you, and thank you again for your service.
Well said, thank you. Alright, with that, and is there anyone else who wants to sign up?
That's, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Well, that, I guess, will lead right into the presentation, and I will put my mask on.
I'm gonna take mine off.
What's that?
I'm gonna take mine off.
You're gonna take mine off. Well, I don't know, I mean, we'll try and stay within six feet of each other.
Okay, I think we all, amazing.
The object would be north.
Alright, so, first off, we are gonna do the presentation of the memorial plaque to two families tonight, former mayors, both former mayors, Don Carr and Nick Dispenzieri, and I will read to you the plaque we have for Mayor Don Carr, and I practiced that because I was pronouncing it wrong, and so...
I'm sure.
Mayor Pro Temp reminded me tonight of the right pronunciation, so, that is right.
That's correct, I'm glad you learned.
You know, it's enough.
At least for you, for two years.
That's just her.
I, before I read this, I will just tell you, I always got a kick, I met him almost before I, when I was running for office, I met him at, I think it was in a meeting with a bunch of individuals at, in a place that wasn't Marvin, it was unincorporated Marvin, right next to the park, and...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, he's, I would say he's a character, right? And it was always a joy to talk to, and we always had his opinions, for sure. And I've always appreciated that, and I think that every time I saw him, I would always see him, especially around the election time and stuff, you know? And we definitely know where, where he was at just by what was placed in the signs in his yard and stuff, which was, very proud to be an American, I'm sure, and in memory of that, I'll read this plaque for you. Let me stand up here, and, this is, what this says is, "Memoriam, Mayor Don Carr, January 19th, 1934 to June 16th, 2020. First mayor of the village of Marvin. Don was a lifelong resident of Marvin. His dedication to the village as its mayor, to the agricultural industry as a farmer, and to the nation as a veteran of the US Army cannot be overstated. This plaque is dedicated to his loving family, to honor his legacy, and commemorate his spirit. You cannot bring about prosperity by discouraging thrift. You cannot strengthen the weak by weakening the strong. You cannot help the wage earner by pulling down..."
Sorry.
You cannot...
Turn it on for the, for the timer, sorry.
"You cannot help the wage earner by pulling down the wage payer. You cannot furlough the brotherhood of man by encouraging class hatred. You cannot help the poor by destroying the rich. You cannot keep out of trouble by spending more than you earn. You cannot build character and courage by taking away man's initiative and independence. You cannot help men permanently by doing for them what they could and should do for themselves." Abraham Lincoln." I guess this was one of his favorite quotes.
Absolutely, he has it everywhere.
Yes, and, you know...
And if he didn't have one, he'd be great.
You know, I, before reading this earlier, I did not know that Abraham, but so many of these words bring so true, and so many of us today, how, I think a lot, how we believe and how we look at how, what America should be, and, you know, him being the first mayor back then, and creating this town, and, I, you know, I'm honored to be, you know, one of his followers, as mayor myself, and we hope, I think, we continue to, are very proud of what we've been able to accomplish so far, and I think he was a big part of creating a town that I think everyone truly enjoys and loves being a part of.
Well, he would be very proud to receive this.
Yes, well, thank you very much, and I'll leave you with that.
He had a call from Richard Vinroot to say, "Don, you better get Marvin incorporated because we're coming after you."
They're coming after you, so he, he did take it, and it did, I can't imagine, you know?
It was quite a job.
I can't imagine, and I know that what we're trying to do, just this little thing that we're trying to do to create a town village center and stuff, was, is hard enough, let alone creating a community, so, his efforts and all, it's been much appreciated by all of us in council, as well as the community.
Well, thank you very much, he would be very proud.
It's gonna be on the December agenda.
Thank you for having us today, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If you want to let her know that his proclamation will be in December.
Okay, one second, what was it?
Mr. Carr's proclamation, as we're doing next tonight, it will be done in December, since his birthday is in January, so he will have his day, I'm not saying it right. Yeah, but we'll, we'll, we'll do the proclamation in December, but his day will be on his birthday in January.
Oh, okay.
So, yes.
And staff will get the proclamation to you, yes, so...
Well, I have a copy of something that is preliminary, I think.
Is that right?
Sure, yeah, I reviewed it, yes.
We'll get you a signed one.
And we're doing a proclamation for Mr. Dispenzieri, Nick Dispenzieri, today, because his birthday was November 6th, and we missed it by a couple days, but we're honoring that, and we'll have something similar, plaque, proclaiming his day for...
That's very nice.
Don Carr Day, for the village of Marvin.
I'm glad you learned how to pronounce it.
I'm a good learner, I'm a very good learner.
He was always very proud that this area would grow like it did, because he had it, he envisioned that.
Right.
And so I told him, "Resident of real estate business, in my house, I mean, mansion, location, location, location."
Yes, yes.
Y'all have been...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mason.
Okay, so next up, we have honoring a proclamation for mayor and councilman, and Mayor Pro Temp, Nick Dispenzieri. I'll, if it's okay with you, I'll be presenting this to Nick's wife, Karen, and, I'm sorry, your first name?
Jenny.
Jenny, okay, I know he has three, ones, you're, you must be the Fordville area, and Nick has a daughter in Seattle and a son in New York, who I met. So, what we did is, the council decided to have a proclamation day and kind of honor Nick, which will be Nick Dispenzieri Day, which will be on his birthday, November 6th, so let me read this for you. Proclamation 2020-10-01, October 29th, 2020, "The Honor and Life and Legacy of Mayor Nick Dispenzieri, 1951 to 2020. Whereas the Village Council of Marvin, on behalf of all Marvin residents, acknowledges the deep sadness felt by members of our community by the loss of Nick Dispenzieri, former mayor and the village of Marvin who passed away July 2nd, 2020. And whereas Nick dedicated his life in service of others, including as a member of law enforcement in New York City, and as mayor, mayor pro temp, and councilman for the village of Marvin. And whereas Nick was instrumental in the establishment of Marvin Efrid Park, and whereas Nick was known for his kindness and love for both his family and community, and whereas Nick was a devoted parishioner of St. Matthew Catholic Church, and a member of the Knights of Columbus, a man guided by faith. And now, therefore, I, Joseph E. Polino Jr., mayor of the village of Marvin, do hereby proclaim the 6th day of November as Nick Dispenzieri Day. In the village of Marvin, in recognition of his life and his significant contributions to our village's county and community, in witness where I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the village of Marvin to be affixed." It's 29th day of October, so that was done a little earlier, so that is for you all. And then, we also had a plaque made for him. This is memoriam, Mayor Nick Dispenzieri, November 6th, 1951 to July 2020. Nick was a former resident of New York City, where he worked in law enforcement before moving to Marvin. He was a man of faith who volunteered and served as a councilman, as mayor pro temp, and as mayor in his many years of service. In all, he served from 2007 to 2019. This plaque is dedicated to his loving family, to honor his legacy, and commemorate his spirit. The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. He makes me lie down in green pastures. He leads me beside still waters. He restores my soul. He leads me in right paths, for his name's sake. Even though I walk through the darkest valley, I fear no evil, for you are with me, your rod and your staff, they comfort me. You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies. You anoint my head with oil, and my cup overflows. Surely goodness and mercy shall fall on me all the days of my life, and I shall dwell in the house of the Lord my whole life long." Psalms 23.16, I assume this was one of his favorite verses and stuff. Nick, just to say a few words, personally, I'd see you guys almost every Sunday at the South Mass, which is a little bit closer, a little bit nicer. He was a man of faith, I was a member with him of the Knights of Columbus for a short period of time, and always would see him there, but more importantly, I, I think, you said it best, in all the things he's done for this community, he was a man of few words. As I was making mental notes of what I thought about Nick, he is a man of few words, but what he said was, was very important, and it meant a lot, and he was a, an amazing amount for me, coming into this, amazing amount of information I could get from him, because he had a lot of the history and had me, you know, would help me along with this and help me understand, and, I think Kim, to some extent, has taken his place, and probably now she keeps me to kind of keep the meetings moving along, but, we so appreciated everything he's done for this community, a man that I was honored to work with for, as the short time that we did work together, and, we miss him, we miss him dearly. So, I will agree with this, and, you know...
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
You're welcome, and if there's anyone else that, Andy, I know you've worked with him for a little bit, too.
Yeah, a little bit, I didn't get a chance to spend as much time as some of the other folks around here through the, through the time I was with the village, but what, what bit of time I did spend with him, you know, he's always, always quick to help and very kind, and, so, we can't, we thank you for being here, too, and...
Thank you.
So, your prayers, our prayers are with you and your family, continue.
So much, thank you.
I'm sure we'll see you on Sundays once we get back to normal.
I watch the mass, we watch it streaming, it's quicker.
I, you know what?
I watch it every day.
I will say this, we have mass every Sunday with my kids, it is quicker. Go through that, because you get through everything, we watch it, we stream it live every Sunday, but I miss the interaction.
I know.
We'll look forward to seeing you back on some, either Saturday afternoon is our favorite time, so, hopefully we'll see you then.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Keep in touch if you need me for any...
I will. Give that good recommendation.
Alrighty, nice meeting you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
See you later.
Well said, thank you for all your comments.
Definitely, thank you.
Alright, okay, um...
That was very nice.
Yeah, I'm glad they were able to be here, I think I got a letter from, yeah, James Carr. He was not able to be here, so, he had sent a letter and thanked us, and I think he sent these flowers on behalf of kind of thanking us for doing what we're doing for his, his family, and we appreciate that, so, make that a note. So next up, we have reports and updates, we're gonna go into administrative report first.
Report.
So, I have a lot, I'll try to be brief. Basically, the youth council, we, y'all had advised that you wanted to look into some other municipalities that had a youth council, y'all were interested in that, and staff is working on it, it will probably be January before we get back with y'all, just wanted to let you know that we are working on it. Any questions on that?
So many.
You're working on it, what are you doing? No, I'm just kidding.
And then the remote sign-in policy, y'all had requested us to look into ideas for remote policy, we ended up sending out an email on our listservs, and the school of government provided some recommendation that I've passed along with Chaplain, if he wants to just mention a sentence or two about that.
Yeah, basically, there's a right to attend a meeting, these are public meetings, and there's no mandate to sign up for that, and there's a belief that would violate the statutory right to attend a meeting, I know that's different than signing up and speaking, but, and that may be problematic, so that we do not recommend implementing that policy, especially now that they're encouraging the remote participation.
Any questions? Okay, capital improvement plan, I'm gonna pass out this plan, and I'm gonna be really brief, because y'all are gonna see this probably five times behind what you see today.
Between when and when?
Between now and the time that we start talking about budget.
When we talk about budget.
When we talk about budget. So, in a nutshell, this is the capital project, sorry, capital improvement plan that we have projected out for the next five years, staff has worked the last couple of weeks on getting this accomplished, and what the priorities should be, mostly for next fiscal year, and as you see, we have a $2.1 million capital request for next fiscal year, most of that being Villa Tall and Greenway Master Plan. The numbers that you see here in this chart, you see a million dollars for Villa Tall, this is the numbers that were used at the last capital improvement plan, so anything that we've had discussion about since, we have not updated it, because we don't have actual numbers yet. We will have this discussion again, like I said, more formally, in the beginning of the budget work sessions, but basically, just wanted to show you guys this, how it works, what kind of projects we're looking at for next fiscal year, and we'll go into more detail about these things at our budget meetings. We will have to have a conversation at some point in time about the master plan, the Greenways, because obviously, you see, we have a $10 million request over the next five years, and, again, most of that being the Greenways, so we'll have more conversation on that. But y'all can look at this at your leisure, and you'll see it again in months to come. Any questions on that? Alright, the next thing I want to pass around is prioritization forms for non-capital priorities, which is something that the council discussed at the budget retreat in this February, just wanted to kind of show you some of the things that y'all had talked about, and what you prioritize in this fiscal year, and we've accomplished pretty much every single thing that y'all prioritized. We're still working on a couple of things, but just be thinking about these items moving in the next fiscal year, so that y'all can talk about that at the retreat. Any questions on that?
Wait, this is the one that we just, that we've already done?
Yes, that's the one you've already done.
Okay. Probably, we've already done all these.
The next thing that's coming around is the capital project prioritization, and this is basically what formulates that capital improvement plan. What you'll see in here is a list of different projects that we've heard over the years, that we want to see where you guys stand, to determine what these projects are gonna be for next fiscal year. We can assume, based on staff's recommendation, that we're on the same page, but we just want to make sure we get that information from you guys. So if there's something that you think is a priority, that you don't see on here, please let us know by the end of next week, so when I send these forms out to council, we can have that information to prioritize in these charts.
So you want these back, Lynn?
Well, I want, I don't want these back at all right now, I want to make sure that y'all are okay with the projects that are in here, and see if there's anything that I missed, or anything that needs to be deleted. We'll talk, we'll talk about it again in December, but y'all just be stewing over that and make sure there's nothing on, on that you want to take off, or something that you want to add.
There you go.
And what we did, the thing that's coming around now is just a chart, so we can show you how we take that information and put it together.
Oh, 21, 22. Oh, 21, 22.
So one is capital, one is non-capital.
That's right.
The non-capital, we've already done.
Yes.
Do we have, do you want us to give you a non-capital?
No, 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 I don't want anything with that. Just unless y'all want other projects that you're working on that are non-capital in next year, this was just some of the things that y'all discussed.
So yes, you do want something if we have them.
Yes, if you do.
Got it. And, okay, so this is what we've done, but if we have new ideas, we have not done this, and you want us to write these.
Not yet. I want you to tell me if there's anything you want to add.
And or add.
And we'll talk about it again in December, is when, I'll pass it out, we'll give you a due date.
Oh, a due date?
Yeah. And what happens is we formulate that, that chart that you see, that came around, and that's where we kind of match up to make sure your priorities are the same that's on next fiscal year. That's kind of how the magic works.
Oh yeah, because you give us colors, right?
Y'all don't know.
What is orange recognized? It's R2, what's that?
R2 is respondent 2, so that's, y'all are anonymous there.
That's probably you do.
Oh, these are different.
This is us. This is our response, these are our responses.
So we basically look, see kind of how projects are ranked, like let's say Villarreal Hall was ranked number one, then that's going to be a project that we try to incorporate in next fiscal year. If it was number 10 out of 10, then we would rank that way later down in the future years. Does that make sense? Okay.
So what do you think, yeah, what do you think, we're all on the same page on looking at this? It's like, you know, I know there's a lot of colors and stuff, but what are we all looking at?
We're going to re-rank these later.
Yeah, you will. This was, this was at the beginning of this year. I think Villarreal was number one.
It's just their preliminary reference.
Well, we just didn't understand what we were, how we were scoring.
What our priorities are.
Yeah. And we'll do this again.
That's always been number one, I don't see why.
And then the last thing, so again, on the priority sheets, if there's a project that you don't see on there that you think needs to be added, let me know.
So we can bring that back to you for our homework for December?
You can, yes. Yep. And then the last thing is the Greenway repair update, and we said that we were going to get quotes back on that by this meeting, we're still working on those quotes, so you'll see those through quotes in next meeting. And that was the repair that's needed on the loop where it was flooding and just FYI. And that's all I have.
Thank you. A lot of work, a lot of information, thank you. Alright, next up, we have planners' report.
Okay, I also know a lot of things, so I'll try to keep it concise as well. My first update is on the CRTPO grant, where we applied for a $1.2 million for Marvin Loop Trail. We submitted the application, and they came back to us with some revisions that they wanted, and we submitted the revisions, which adjusted quite a little bit, so that we're asking them for 1.1 million, and that we would match the 740, before it was 1.2, and we matched 800. But again, those, those sources are coming from various sources, so not all from the general fund. That's just, that's just to say that we've submitted the grant, and we'll be discussing it in CRTPO over the next couple of months, and it seems that they'll be deciding in February, March or so, or let's say early next year.
And who makes that decision?
There's a, there's a committee, the Project Oversight Committee, and CRTPO staff, they will prioritize, they'll score the projects, and then decide who gets the money. So there's a, there's a pool of money.
Is that that pool that we're talking about at the, or?
Yeah, it's the DA fund, yeah. So that's just, we'll hear back from them in a few months. Any questions on that? Okay. Next is the CRTPO TCC update. Just a quick recap, there was a bit of money given to CRTPO by the NDOT to choose which of the unsuspended, which of the suspended projects in the Charlotte area would be unsuspended, and CRTPO came up with a prioritization index, and they scored smaller projects higher, and they scored projects that are further along higher, and that way our roundabout at Marvin Road in Newtown did make the top cut to be funded with the money that they got out, it was one of seven or so projects. And so on November 5th, the TCC did vote unanimously to approve that prioritization index, which would mean that recommendation would go to the full CRTPO board. I was, I'm the member, Marvin's voting member for TCC, so I was really happy to be able to vote yes for that. And then Mayor Palino is our voting member for the CRTPO board, so that meeting is on November 18th evening, so don't miss it.
Yeah, I've been, we've been talking to people at Yuma, BUMA, and encouraging them to be there, and I was asking Bjorn if there's anyone we should be, you know, tapping and stuff, but usually they go along with the recommendations of the TCC. So I don't foresee any issues, obviously. I've encouraged all the municipalities to just show up for that meeting, and it is on, like a Zoom call, they're not doing in-person meetings and stuff. And the meeting is on the 18th, is what it shows, it's like 6:30, I think it is.
I don't know the time, I just know the home of the day. You probably have the direct communication.
Yeah, I was just looking to see, and all my, I've been having computer issues, and a lot of my dates have dropped off, but I know I have an email from them, so I will, I will make sure I have, I have that on YouTube, but not a problem.
Okay, great.
Can you make yourself a note, call him on the 18th to make sure?
Not that bad.
Seriously.
Yeah, he's writing the note.
So is Christina.
You'd be getting a bunch of phone calls, you know. Jamie, you're the alternate, just so you know. Circle back around him.
Make a note, it's all Jamie too.
Okay, so is there no questions on that? Okay, great. So annotation update, this annotation drive is really coming along, a lot of moving pieces are moving at the same time. I called a bunch of HOA presidents of the neighborhoods that are right outside of Marvin, all of them seeing the warmth, the idea, talking to their boards and seeing what we can do moving forward, but I haven't gotten any concrete, yeah, come to our meeting at this day kind of feedback yet. So supplies-wise, we got all the flyers printed, we got the envelopes, we got the labels printed with everyone's address on it, and it's kind of a little, bit of a labor task to get those folded in envelopes and labels, but we're, we're moving along on that as well.
Usually not 1,500 letters?
Yeah, 1,500 letters, right. And so, yeah, all of that's going well. I still need contact information for Walden Pond chimneys, so if any of you want to help me get that, I've reached out to.
I got you four.
Yeah, you got me four, and I reached out to all of them, and they were all warm for it, so that's really good. Well, yeah.
Didn't you talk to somebody in Walden Pond?
Yeah, but I haven't gotten that HOA contact for them yet. I mean, I've reached out to people who I know live in that neighborhood, but I think it'll all come together, basically, that's all I'm going to say. Okay, for INJ, I just put on a planners' report to say it's also a work in progress, but I wasn't, I didn't have them ready for this meeting. And Kay, I pulled out some state statutes.
Sorry, that's supposed to be ABC, it just, it just.
Yeah, I know, that's fine.
Those, those two will be December or January.
Right.
Wait, which two? I, J.
They're just to say that I have, I've been working on them, but haven't got it ready for the meeting. And for Kay, I found some state statutes that basically say operations of the DOT are, like supersede any municipal ordinances, and, and they have every right to maintain everything that comes into their roadway and.
Which one are you talking up to?
The illumination of Villarreal Hall, the idea that we could light our Villarreal Hall, and that would light the roadway.
Or the roundabouts.
Yeah, they're saying, and in their lighting plan, they say any light that comes onto the road is like an operation of DOT, so it has to be managed by them. So it's not something that we can just do tactical urbanism and just make it happen. Sorry.
I'll just sit out there with my headlights on, traffic's at war.
Well, that's a good idea. Somebody from DOT rolls up, you can just drive off.
That's called civil disobedience.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
We'll do shifts.
As a private thing. So that's all for my planners' report today.
Alright. Any questions for Rohit? Thank you, Rohit. Next up, we have Rosa's reports. Thank you, Christina.
Yes, I got a lot again. Okay, so the first thing is Weddington Chase road damage. So as you see in your agenda packet, there's this picture, I don't know if they can see it, but there's some paint that's on the road in Weddington Chase, it's been there for about a year now. Our engineers thought it would disappear at some point in time. Unfortunately, you'll have a subsequent item on your agenda that talks about road repair, but we're just proving that tonight, so we can't bill anyone for this damage. And Weddington Chase is asking us to go out and remove it, these are our roads. I asked our engineer, basically what would, you know, what it would take, and he thinks it's going to be around $2,000 to pressure wash it. So if council is okay with that, then I will move forward with getting that in motion.
So you think that will work with pressure washing?
That's what Mike seems to think, yes.
What does our policy say? We, we have to have some sort of policy, that when we have stuff that comes up, even if it's our roads or not, like if it was DOT, I've got pink paint on my street in front of my house. If I call DOT, they're not going to do anything about it. So what does our roads policy say about aesthetics? The road still works, there's, it's not cracking, it's not falling apart. I, when are we, when are we doing a seal? Are we doing a seal like on this in a couple of years, a year or so?
Weddington Chase is, I have to look at the individual sheet.
I mean, it can't just be like, oh, it's $2,000 here, oh, that thing's going to be $3,000, oh, it's $1,500 here, and that starts to add up. Like what does our policy say about aesthetics? I don't know if our policy.
They have a tendency to agree with the chem, aesthetics, that's, I mean, that's above and beyond road maintenance.
I mean, the road's not falling apart, it's drivable. I mean, I hate it for them, but somebody put paint in their trash can, and this is, this is what happened.
Weddington, and I don't know, to answer your question, I don't know if it says anything specifically about aesthetics, I think it's all about functionality and safety.
It functions just fine. It is safe.
So I think it's probably silent in aesthetics. Weddington Chase is scheduled to be fog sealed in fiscal year '22, '23.
Okay, so will fog seal cover that?
It should, yes.
The why are we spending $2,000, I mean, it's going to, we need some sort of policy, or it needs to say in our roads policy, something about aesthetics. If the road's falling apart, absolutely, we need to get out there, we need to get it fixed. But if I call DOT right now and say, hey, can you just come out here and take care of this paint patch in front of my, in front of my house, they're going to laugh at me?
We would treat this as, as a damage to our road that needs repaired, which Rick has provided an ordinance.
But is the road damaged?
No.
It's not a damage though, it's paint on the road.
For the ordinance that he's written though, the way that it states now is if we could trace it back to some individual, we could bill that individual for this repair, but that didn't exist prior to tonight.
Right.
So moving forward, we do have that in place as of this year.
Well, it was years ago, we had an issue where a cement truck went into a cul-de-sac and realized that he took a wrong turn, and when he made the turn in the cul-de-sac, he spilled out a bunch of cement, and it landed on the road now.
But you can't drive on it then.
But you could drive, you could still drive on it, but it was clearly more of an aesthetic issue than anything else. And I'm not, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, and I know in the past that we've actually went and looked at it. I mean, if it's, if it's worth anywhere, if the Boy Scouts are looking for a project, I'll volunteer my pressure washer and see if the Boy Scouts want to take on a project or something, but, I mean, because here's the problem with this, where's the water source coming from? I mean, if you're doing a pressure washing job, I mean, where are you going to?
So you're going to have a water, you're going to have a water truck with you.
This is, I mean, I think this is above and beyond road maintenance, I think this is just purely aesthetics, and I feel like if this is, this is more than what the village is responsible for.
I do. I mean, it's going to already get fog sealed in a year. It's scheduled to be fog sealed in a year.
And what are we spending on that? If, if this.
It's about a hundred thousand.
I thought this was something larger. At the end of the day, I will turn to the HOA and say, alright, let's pump you up two grand, because that's what we think the estimate's going to be, and let's pressure wash it. But put the owners, and that's the reason you have an HOA. You know, because if we do this to them.
That's what I'm saying. And then $2,000 here, $1,500 here.
Then the next neighborhood, the next neighborhood's going to go, oh, but you pressure washed their drive, why can't you pressure wash my drive?
That's essentially what needed to be done to our, the road humps in our neighborhood is pressure washing.
So, I, I, you know, that would just be my.
Well, we should have a policy going forward.
We do.
You know.
Well, no, I think we need like an aesthetics policy. Like I agree, if there's a hole in the road, we need to get out there, we need to repair it, but this is not a hole in the road.
I mean, this could have been from a, from a resident, quite frankly. It could have been from a worker, a painter that happened to be going, we don't know who it is, but it's like.
Could have been somebody that painted the trash can.
Could have been somebody, like you said, painted the trash can, leaked out a garbage truck. It could have been a contractor that drove by with a paint bucket tipped over the back of his truck. It's really hard to say who did it and how it happened.
It doesn't matter who did it.
But it's an aesthetic.
How long ago was that, did that come up?
This, about a year ago. Because the engineer thought that it would just eventually rub off, wear off.
I need to put that paint on my house.
I would just, I would refer to the HOA.
I thought you were going to go down the power bill.
So it sounds like the consensus is, you know, talk with the HOA and see if they can get done.
Let's hear from Bob, do you have any comments, Bob?
No, I agree with everybody, you know, it's somebody spilled something on the road, you know, and, you know, it isn't, you know, it isn't our responsibility to clean up something on aisle four. I mean, it's, it's what happens.
That was funny, Bob. That was good.
Okay, we'll communicate that to them. Next thing is the roundabout lighting update. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, if not last week, regarding a DOT meeting and Union Power. So in short, we're, we're still working on it, we did have Mayor Protam in attendance to that meeting, and so she heard firsthand that it is a requirement of DOT. What we're doing, instead of doing the, if you recall, the discussions were that Union Power came back with a $8,500 survey that was required. What we're going to do is we've got the specs that are necessary, we're, we've communicated that to our engineer, Mike Walden with AMT, he's going to put together a package, talk with DOT to make sure it's good, looks great, he's going to submit it back to us, which will be done in December, and then we will submit it in turn to Union Power, who will then send it back to DOT for final approval. So we're still looking at February, March.
Alright. That being said, and assuming we get the go-ahead on this here, and the fact that that's already dark and they're putting up lights there, is there a way when, you know, because we can't, we got to deal with it, but when this comes in play, can we have that part of the, everything done ahead of time? Because it's dark now, it's not going to get any lighter, and we're putting a roundabout in there. So we're going to have the same thing a year, two years later, we still don't have roundabouts. So they're saying, when will this get to a point where we're actually putting up, how about, how long do they estimate that?
When we're actually what?
Putting lights up over here?
Oh, well, we have to get approval from DOT, well, we don't, Union Power does. So we're working with DOT to get kind of a gentleman's agreement that we're okay with it, then we'll submit it to Union Power, who will then in turn submit it to DOT.
And the survey still has to be done or not?
No, Mike's going to do it.
So can we, to Joe's point, can we start this process for this one?
Do you have to tack on to that?
Yeah, I was asking, Rohit, how much of the, the plans have been done for that roundabout?
There are 95% plans, and what that means is if the lights aren't on the plans, there's still, you know, some time flexibility to add into the plans.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start that.
Let's do that, that way, by the time it's built, maybe we'll have...
Yeah, and whoever's going that way, then I take some pictures when you drive through there and just, you know, so we have the...
While we're driving ourselves?
Well, how dark it is.
We'll go ahead and start that conversation, but I just wanted to let you know that it's probably gonna be spring before we have anything official, just because of the process.
All right, just keep updating us where we're in the process. Like, by December meeting, hopefully Mike will have the plan, and we send it to DOT. They're going to like, let's just, let's just keep pushing it.
There are just ones, we've no others.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the next thing is temporary speed hump stop signs update. So if you recall, we had a lot of discussions from Wyndham Hall in regards to speeding and wanting some four-way stops in that area. Those roads are DOT, and we've looked at different things that we can do four-way, to do the four-way stops. The temporary speed signs, I'm sorry, the temporary stop signs are no-go from DOT.
Why?
It's against their standards.
Everything's against the standards. Change the standards. I mean, I don't know why it's gonna be our roads, and we're asking, this is a safety issue, we believe it is, and they just don't care, they don't have enough...
They don't care. It's against their standards, they recommend against it. If, if we want it that much, they're gonna tell us to take the roads.
So, that said...
The temporary speed humps are an option.
They are, but they, you have to give a study first, I thought.
Well, okay, so the temporary speed humps are, the temporary speed bumps are not. Tables, speed tables. A bump is just a little tiny thing that you see in a parking lot.
A bump's a dome, but a hump's a ladder, you know.
Right.
So which one is, okay?
Uh-huh.
The longer one?
Yes.
Yeah, the wider one. So it's designed to go over 25 miles an hour without damaging your car.
So if I did ask...
But that comes with a, that comes with a requirement, and DOT does a study.
Not if they're temporary, right?
No, well, no, but it's gonna cost some money.
Well, that's fine, if the neighborhood wants it, then they can pay for it.
So that's what, y'all wanna get the neighborhood to pay for these?
That's what our street policy is.
Okay.
Yeah, but just to go by, because we went through this with our neighborhood, and so did Martin Creek. My understanding was, you know, I made some record with them.
But they're permanent, not temporary. Okay, well, I will have that conversation with Mike, he'll be able to...
Yeah, maybe they can sell them to another neighborhood after they don't need them anymore and stuff.
All right, so the temporary, I'm sorry, the roundabout planting update. So as of this morning, they are gonna start next Thursday, I believe, on the roundabout.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
This starts like pending rain, yeah.
So in the next week.
It'll be next week.
It's gonna rain through the weekend.
The next week or two, we'll start seeing some activity. We don't anticipate any road closures, so we haven't really communicated that out, but we will see some plantings next, this month, at least. And that's all I have for now.
Okay, next up, we have deputies report. Do we have our deputy here?
We have a deputy in there hiding.
Want me to grab him? He can do it.
He's being silent.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This month, we had 29 non-armed calls, only six accidents, and they were all property damage accidents. We had 24 alarms, one larceny of a vehicle, which was actually a car hauler trailer that was in development, 46 traffic stops, 276 preventive patrols, and four suspicious vehicles, which were not located and were arrived. And Halloween went off without a hitch.
Did Mason give review about that suspicious car in the neighborhood? I sent him a text about it.
I'll call him.
I need to call him, Robert, will you?
And that was it?
So with the alarms law, my understanding is with more than one, then there's, like after three, there's a filing, is that correct?
I think it's after two.
After two?
The third one is...
You guys impose that, or is that the council that does that?
As far as...
Spreading out. Profiling.
What it is, is there's a program on our computer.
Okay.
We go through each month, go through the log, and whatever is not a, whatever's a false alarm, we end up putting it on citation, and it actually keeps a rolling log of everything on the computer.
So you're allowed to, just for those listening, you're allowed to within what time period?
Is within a year.
Within a year. Someone called me years ago, asking if they could, I could waive their... So how much is it? I'm like, $50, I say, go pay it. Which is what it is, but anyway. All right, thank you. Any questions from councils?
Thanks, thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom, be safe. All right, next up, Planning Board Chair report. Chairman Jones, I see you on the list there, I think I saw you right there.
Well, I'm here.
There you are. I don't see you, but I hear you.
I'm visually hiding, but I'm here.
Okay, I get it.
I'd say that we're not exactly loafing, but we are taking a, a deep breath before we dig into the hard stuff again in the near future. I guess is the best way. Yeah, we're just doing the, you know, the routine stuff these days. I'll give you several items that we've already sent to you and stuff, but, you know. Unless someone has specific questions for me, I don't have any, you know, great revelations for you.
John, just out of curiosity, how long you been, you've been on for how long on the planning board?
Uh, well, let's see, you renewed, uh...
Because we like you.
In January, what is it, three-year term, since I'm working on the fifth year, I believe.
Okay, so four years, and, you know, I think this, the plan, the land use plan has been on there, always has been there, and I think you guys have done a very thorough job on when you were revisited it as it was needed, and I think was determined by council over the past few councils. So this hasn't been just something that has come up or that hasn't been there. But I think, I just want to comment that you've personally been working on it for almost four years now, and I can assure you that it's been on the, the list of things to do, if you will, for a lot longer than that. So I appreciate all your efforts, as well as Planning Board, who participated in putting this together for our public hearing tonight, so.
Yeah, I think that the original draft of it was dated 2015, which was before my time.
Yeah, okay, so, well, I know we've talked about it ever since I've been here, and, or early times I've been here since 2013, it has been mentioned and stuff, and it definitely needed another look and a revise, if you will, and we, again, appreciate your time and efforts on that, so thank you for that.
Right, and, you know, I think it has to be updated periodically, but this was, compared to the 2004 document, this was a major, you know, update. And I think, I would hope that any future updates would not fail, not be nearly as difficult and time-consuming.
Yeah. Us too, thank you for that. Any other questions from council? Thank you, John. All right, next up, we have PRG Chair report.
Johnny isn't here, but he did have something he wanted to talk about. You can, you can speak to this if you like him, or I can jump on it. Just about the, the planning board, the PRG board has been having discussions as of late about parking fees for non-residents at the park, and if that's really necessary to, to the ideals of maintaining a public park. And they are looking for council's input on this.
They, they don't, they, they don't like them. They feel that it's unwelcoming and that people get offended. I guess offended's the right word, if...
Deturbed, I guess, maybe?
Yeah, deterred from coming and getting a pass and using the park if they're not residents.
They're not opposed to professional passes, though, for photographers and things like that.
So they've been talking about...
Do they want to just open up to everyone?
Kinda.
That's what you're doing, essentially.
Yeah, they do. And they've talked, they've been talking about it for a couple of meetings. Derek likes having the parking pass because it's a way to enforce if there are people there not there for using the park for the right reasons. It's a deterrent, so he can say, oh, you don't have a parking pass, you guys gotta go. So, you know, I know that when the park was established, it was very much, this is, you know, the Village of Marvin's Park, it's for the residents, we want the parking passes enforced. You know, I don't, I don't have a, I really don't have a feeling either way, so, but they're, they're very much against it. Andy?
I have been against it since day one.
Okay.
It's a public park, and by definition, anybody can walk into that park without any pass at all. The only thing is the parking that is controlled. And there is not another single park in this area that has those restrictions. We're, we're all welcome at their parks, and I feel like that we come across as snooty, not welcoming everybody else to our park. So I've been against it from day one. I'm not against rentals and those types of things, it's customary with any park, but just visiting our park, I think that it would help increase the rental traffic, to be quite honest, if we invite those people, because they will come and see it and want to enjoy it more. That's my piece.
Amy?
Well, I'm kinda on the same path as, as Andy. I mean, imagine someone coming in from out of town and just taking their grandchildren down there, and they roll in there, and we've got someone going, ah! Again, I don't ever remember, and I can't recall, other than a national park, that there's any type of fee that would, that would be charged. And so I would, I would not before, before change, you know, charge someone a park.
Bob, how you feel about that?
You know, I would agree, you know, Councilman Wardman makes a good point. If you're in Mecklenburg County and you go into a park, you know, to see a sign saying, you know, have you paid to be here? And this opens up the precedent of the fact that if we decide at some point in the future to do something and develop a park, a one acre parcel by Publix, then where do we, you know, draw the line there? Because you're gonna have a lot of residents that are gonna be coming up from Waxaw that might see that, that patronize Publix. You know, it gives, it gives good food for thought. I never gave, you know, until this has come up, I've never given this, that kind of thought, but I've been to that park three times in the past week, and, you know, I've seen the signs and, you know, felt like, well, okay, I'm a Marvin resident, I can be here. But, you know, to others, you know, it may be, well, it's a public park, you know? So I would agree.
Is this something you all would like to see on a future agenda for discussion, or go back to the PRG, or?
I mean, I, I mean, I, I mean, again, I've got really no feelings one way or the other. You guys, I'm fine with it.
Well, the only thing I would say, since I didn't comment, but I know I don't have a vote, but I'll still say something.
I didn't ask you.
I know. But, and I don't mean to sound snooty and stuff, but we were, we're trying to... No, I mean, it is what it is, and the argument in the past was, we're trying to close the loophole, and what do we offer, you know? A residence in that park was a big thing that you could, you know, that was one of the things that, you know...
But it's a $5 thing, right? Isn't, I mean, aren't the parking passes for non-residents?
It's a negative, it's a negative publicity, or negative point. I, again, I'm all for the whole thing with renting the space, because that's a, you're getting a value add for that, but parking, I would...
So, and I'm indifferent from a standpoint, I think that was my argument years ago, when the other council that I was surrounded by was adamant that it be a Marvin resident park only, and that that was one of the reasons that would bring people in, but you guys make all good points, and I think if we're able to expand, especially if we're able to expand the rental properties, or the rental for non-residents, which I believe is still gonna be higher.
It is.
And that's not gonna change, then that drives a little bit of that, and maybe we can see some added features at the park by higher revenues from there, if that makes any sense. I don't know if it has its own revenue source yet, or anywhere near there, but I know it does bring some stuff in. Probably, maybe not even to cover the maintenance right now, I guess would be, so.
All right, so do you guys want to put this on the consent agenda to take off the parking passes for the December meeting? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob, you good with that? Bye.
And we will inform the PRG at their next meeting.
I'll, I'll, I'll inform them of that.
There you go, you're there, Kim.
Okay, moving on. Thank you for filling in for...
Well, it's just like Don, don't like.
Next up, we have, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on to public hearings. Number one, open the public hearing for zoning text amendment application that number 20-12525, various text changes to Marvin Gardens Development Standards regarding fuel station, convenience store. So I need a motion to open public comments.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Has anyone signed up on...
I can check the sheet earlier.
I have not received any comments in regards to Marvin Gardens Amendment.
Okay. And I think we have to ask anyone with some...
Yeah. If anyone, yeah, so if anyone...
Yes, I'm looking at, we have quite a few people on our WebEx, and if any of you want to make a comment...
They need to state their address for the record.
You need to unmute yourself, and we'll kind of pick you and mute yourself and state your name, address, and we'll give you three minutes to any comments. I don't see anyone unmuting. So we'll just move forward, since no one is public comment. We got, wait, Colin, user number six, we have a comment from you? But I can't see her name, so just, we have in is Colin, user number six. You unmuted yourself?
I don't think they were muted before.
Nobody's speaking up, then.
We'll need a motion to close public comment.
No comments, so moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion to open up discussion consideration. Moving to discussion consideration for the public text amendment.
Okay, I'll get started here.
He signed a motion, but he...
Oh, sorry.
We need a motion to close the...
Yeah, we do need to... Oh, we do?
To close, that we just did on?
Yeah.
We did, but we need a motion to open up discussion.
No.
We don't, we just go into discussion.
We closed the public hearing.
We did, we did. Okay, so then we'll move right into discussion consideration of application number 20-12525.
Okay, sure, but before, before we go into that, if anyone wanted to make a public comment, was having technical difficulties, please feel free to email our clerk about your public comment. So with that, I'll just get into it. So Marvin Gardens is an individual conditional district, which means that they, they, we created a development standard back in 2016 when the site was originally B-zone, and that, that's... And so that is the zoning ordinance for the site. So when someone wants to do something that's different, you wouldn't submit a variance, you submit a text amendment. So that's what we're here today to consider, four text amendments, three of which you had a pre-application meeting for, and then one of them has come up since then. The text amendments are to change the hours of the store from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m., to change the hours of the pump to open instead of 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m., to add four station, or four fueling positions, so to change it from 8:00 to 12:00, and to add an additional sign on the building that would face the rear, which is on the Newtown roadside next to the, the fuel price, which is already allowed, and it would be next to the, and the sign would be next to that.
So where is the sign, first sign would be where?
This first sign would be on the, the parking side of the building where, you know, the gas station pumps are. Like, above the, above the building.
Right, but, but it would be facing Newtown, it'd be facing...
Yeah, the one sign, yes. The one sign that is allowed would be facing the inside of the development.
So inside to the parking lot, to like that, like...
Yeah, no, I get that, I just wanted to know where that sign was, because the other one was, there was a public, I saw a public sign with a list of all the out parcels that could be enrolled.
Right, right, but Publix has to give the tenants a spot, and they wouldn't give 7-Eleven a spot on that. There's only four or so spots, and there are a lot of tenants that would come and want that spot, whereas an out parcel building could just have its own sign on the building. And this is not, this, these out parcels, none of, none of them are allowed to have their own standalone signs, like monument signs, while Publix has these monument signs at several of the entrances, but none of these out parcels, including the gas station, convenience store, would be allowed to have something like that on its own.
So, Planning Board took this up?
Yes, yeah, Planning Board did take your pre-application meeting into consideration. Of course, the Fourth Amendment for the sign, I figured that one is pretty straightforward, but the first three, they did recommend, as you... but the first three, they did recommend, as you had felt at that time, which was to recommend the denial of the change in hours, and to recommend approval of the increase in pumps and the additional sign.
So where, tell me where exactly the sign would go, or if I'm looking at...
So if you're looking at the site plan, it's there...
This one is, is that the same one I just opened up?
There, um, let's see. Yeah, so this is the site plan you'd be looking at. They're proposing like a triangle-shaped building, and, let me put it this way here, I'll show the camera, again.
Oh, so it would be literally on the back of the building? It's not gonna be like a standalone sign?
No, yes, it's gonna be on the face of the building, where a price cabinet is already allowed, but they would put the sign next to the price cabinet.
Got it.
And if you look at the Circle K in Blakeney, where there are pictures in the zoning ordinance that use that gas station as an example, they also do have the sign next to price cabinet. But for some reason, it just wasn't stated as allowed in the ordinance.
And that'll be a sign that's lit up in the evening.
Might want to... Yes, it would, it would be illuminated.
Sure, it would be.
Yeah, all the, all the signs in this district are allowed to be...
We should have it on here.
So, let me show that to the audience here. So, this is Newtown Road, this is Newtown Road. The current sign would be allowed, let's see, on that face, facing the inside of the development, and the sign that's being requested would be on the face of the building that is facing Newtown Road. Yes. And this is, this is a sign that exists, that is allowed currently, and that is a sign that they would be proposing.
So, and there's only one location that we have identified for the gas station, correct?
Yes, that is the only out parcel that would be allowed to have a gas, of the more out parcels.
So, basically, where did, where did Planning Board comment back at?
No to one and two, yes to three and four.
Okay. Does anyone wanna start? I know I have some comments.
I'm sure you do.
Sure, I guess before Council makes comments, Kathleen Rose, who is the spokesperson for this text amendment, is also in the WebEx audience, and you can address her to ask any questions. She's representing the, she's representing the 7-Eleven and the zoning text amendment. There are also some other people, engineers, for this project are in the audience as well. I just wanted to just mention her as, you know, being here in the audience, and I guess if you wanna introduce yourself for a second, you can, but if you guys have any comments that, you know, you can ask me any questions, but you can also ask her any questions.
We need a motion to allow her to speak, and you could just give some consensus.
No, because I put her as the presenter for the item.
I mean, we, we did have a pre-application meeting for this.
Yes.
Yes, and so we have talked about this extensively, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it was a pretty lengthy...
The only thing that's changing is they want the second wall sign.
Right.
Okay.
That was when they proposed the changes as a concept, and now they have submitted the application and that is processed.
The actual application, okay.
Yes.
So, but the hours were different, though. They asked for hours, they asked for 24 hours in the beginning, right?
Yes, there was, yeah.
And then we said, I think you made the comment, "Not a Good Happens After Midnight," or something like that.
I still believe that.
So they actually are not asking for additional hours in the night, they've just asked for the change in hours from six to four.
4:00 AM is the middle of the night. It's, I mean, let's be realistic.
I mean, I, I might consider five, but just because I know contractors get up early and they use the gas stations and stuff, but I, I would still probably be in favor of 6 o'clock, that's usually when they can, you know, I don't know, I haven't been in the contracting business in quite some time, but I know they tend to fill up their gas and stuff like that. I think the, if I'm not mistaken, the council is in favor of moving it from 8:00 to 12:00. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is there anyone still opposed to that? Bob?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Time, is anyone open to moving the time from 4:00 AM to, from 6:00 AM to 4:00 AM for the, I guess there's two separate asks here, one for fuel pumps, but you can't operate the fuel pumps without the convenience store, correct?
You can, you can.
It's critical.
No, I'm not in favor of either one of those.
Okay.
I'm not either.
Jamie? Bob?
No, I only have a question. If the fuel pumps, and I might need to defer to Ms. Rose on this, but if, if the fuel pumps are put on, does, does that mean the canopy, the lights are also on, which would be, what would be disturbing to the residents?
Kathleen, I think that was directed to you.
We can't hear. And to, to the, can you hear me?
Okay, now I can, yeah, we just turned the...
Sorry, I have a little difficulty with the audio, so I'll apologize in advance if it's chopping. So yes, we have to have the lights on, the fuel pumps are on. And again, to the point, it's for service workers, contractors, healthcare workers, you know, folks that might be going to work before 7:00 AM or 6:00 AM.
But the, the short answer is the lighting would have it be on if the hours were changed, right? All right. So, I, I'm, I'm gonna assume, and I won't assume, so I'll just go around and ask, is council basically not in favor of moving it to 4:00 AM for either convenience or fuel pumps?
Correct.
Yeah, correct. And Bob?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the last item it would have, as far as the, any changes, would be to adding this, I think we're okay with 8:00 to 12:00, and then changing to adding a, allowing a sign to be added. Does anyone wanna pick that up? I, I'll say this, today's world that we live in, I mean, it's, it's some, to some extent, less is more, and less lighting, I look at lighting like that as pollution, visual pollution, which we're trying to create things, and if I'm looking for a gas station or a convenience store with the apps that you have now, where's the closest app? And everyone that goes into Publix is gonna know that store's there, so in a short time, they're gonna know the gas station is there and the, the thing. This is the opinion of one, so don't be offended, and I definitely wanna hear everyone else's, but adding the extra sign, I don't think does any benefit. When you're in there, you see it there, and if you're driving around, you're low on gas, or you're looking for a gas station, I, all you have to do is ask Siri, "Where's the closest gas station?", and it'll tell you within a quarter of a mile or whatever, direct you right to where you're going, so, and I look at that as just more, unfortunately, I don't know another term for it, but I, I look at it as sign pollution, if you will, lighting pollution that goes out and it stays out at night, and then, you know, I don't know if it's really needed, but that, I'll stop there, and I'll open it up to any other voting council members that want to address that.
Well, I, I kinda, I have to agree with the mayor on this one. I don't particularly like any more signs than we absolutely have to have, and the light pollution is a huge concern of mine. Personally, I like to look at the stars, and less stars are visible because of light pollution from everything around us. Every time we add more lights, we add more light pollution, so...
You could allow, you can make the sign not be allowed to be lit, if you allow it added, so much sense.
Well...
Yeah, if I might add, that this was in addition to the price or cabinet, so what's really, the point is to understand not only the price, which is what's required by law to be identified, but just which type of gas. So 7-Eleven versus Circle K versus Mobil, Exxon, that kind of thing. So that's the point of it, is to identify not only the price, but whose gas you're purchasing, and they generally are together as one cabinet, so we're just asking for the extra piece
You're saying you're legally required to have that lit up?
They're legally required to show the price.
Okay.
And that is currently allowed and is going on the side of the building.
Right, so it's just the logo of the gas ramp attached to the pricer that we're asking for, which I think, Rokee, you have the PowerPoint and the illustrations that you've shown?
Yeah.
American Beast.
Okay.
So the, what she's saying is the price that you see, there's like...
That's gonna be on it?
That's already allowed, aren't they?
Price is already allowed.
So this is, so this piece is already on the back?
It's already gonna be allowed.
The only thing that you're adding is the 7-Eleven sign.
The logo, yes.
It's already lit up back there. You're, you're adding literally the 7-Eleven.
And I can tell you, going by, going by the one overall, real road, it's not, it's not like the spotlight. It's a very minimized light, just, again, when you go buy it, it just tells you what, what kind of gas you're dealing with, 7-Eleven, or Circle K, or Exxon, or whatever.
And I guarantee the Oma headlight there is not gonna, is gonna be outshining that little lit up 7-Eleven.
Way outshining, and in that case, then I guess it doesn't make too much difference, signs are already there.
I thought we were, I thought it was, it implied we were adding a whole separate sign on Newtown Road.
No, 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 the price is already there, specifically in the design standards, it says that there will be allowed a price, the price, the two, the two prices that are on the face of the building facing Newtown Road, those are already allowed, but not the sign that shows the brand.
It's just the literal 7-Eleven, is it?
Yeah.
It's that part, it's that part right there.
Right, I'm fine with that addition, though.
Yeah.
Sorry, then, there must have been a convention or what?
Bob, you good with that?
I am, I, I heard this in the Planning Board meeting, and I heard this Rose when they're discussing this, and I was waiting for, for, thank you, Ms. Rose, for mentioning that. I, it was an addition, it's already a sign there, and, you know, I, I don't think it interferes more than what's there.
Can I state something?
Yep.
I would like to add a proposed amendment, because there are a lot of dimensions with the main sign, and we have depictions for the second, and I would like to add language to it that just says, "If you're inclined to approve it, provided that such second wall sign shall be no larger than the size and scale provided in the depictions prepared by Cummings dated September 15th, 2020." You know they're small, and they're actually to scale, and I don't want you to approve something, and I don't think it'd happen immediately, but in 10 years, if it changes hands, I don't want those to get larger, and that's just a, a small change, and we did have...
Basically adding three-by-three real estate for a sign on this, correct?
Right, yeah, they did it to scale, and it's small on here, and they did, they did the depictions on the Cummings report, and I just wanna make sure, I know 7-Eleven is gonna do it that way, but if it was to change hands...
Exxon.
Exxon, they may come and say, "Well, you didn't specify the dimensions, we want something bigger."
Yeah, good catch.
Okay, so, right now, it looks like we're two out of the four, similar to what Planning Board has approved. Does anyone wanna make a motion, is what I'm hearing, I don't think I've heard anything else on what you guys will...
Chaplin, did they make four motions on this?
They can either do that or combine them, and I did provide a reasonableness and consistency statement, I don't know if it got passed out to everyone, Mayor Procham has, I mean, she does a lot of those motions.
Yeah, sorry, I don't hear.
That's fine, I should've checked on that earlier.
That's up to Jamie.
And you can combine a couple of them if you're, because there are two that are similar.
These consistency and inconsistency statements have, one of them has to be chosen for any motions that are made to zoning amendments, but as always, these are just, you know, a template to say, to show you how you make a statement, you know, whether it is, or is not consistent with the land use plan, but you can say whatever you want, and if you, if you want to just make these motions together, maybe make the denial motions together and the approval motions together, or something like that, you're free to do whatever you feel like. This is just my and Chaplin's help here.
It is hard, because this is one zoning request, but there are four parts, so it's kinda like four, but you could do a motion on the first two, to, and I don't wanna put words, but deny that the hours, and then the reasonableness and consistency statement for that would be inconsistent, if you were to go that way and combine, and I think you had some markings on that, and then with the favorable, let's do it the same way.
Kim, you wanna take a stab at that?
Oh, sure. All right, so, I guess I'm gonna make a motion to not approve the change, to deny the changing of the hours of operation of the fuel pumps from 6:00 AM to midnight to 4:00 AM to midnight, and the inconsistency statement is...
Do you wanna combine, or are you gonna separate the...
No, I'm gonna separate it, it's too, too hard. The Village of Marvin Council finds the action to amend the village's zoning for the Marvin Gardens development standards to allow fuel pump operation and convenience store hours commencing at 4:00 AM, as presented to be inconsistent with the land use plan, and deny, and denial is reasonable and in the public interest, because the amendment would allow additional hours of commercial operations adversely affecting the primarily residential character of Marvin.
So that is a denial for both the fuel pump hours and the convenience store, correct?
Correct.
Did I hear that right?
Correct, I combined those two.
Further discussion?
You're good with how... Yeah, so you have a motion and that, and to adopt that consist, inconsistency statement for both of the two.
For both, okay.
For both, yes.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously, and moving on to the second motion.
I'd like to make a motion to increase the number of fuel positions from eight to 12 positions, and adopt the consistency statement of the Village of Marvin Council finds the action to amend the village's zoning for the Marvin Gardens development standard to increase the number of fuel stations from eight to 12, as presented, to be consistent with the land use plan and reasonable, and in the public interest, because it will provide additional commercial services for the residents in a limited area with little impact on the primarily residential character of Marvin.
You wanna add to that the one on the sign?
No, we'll put that separate.
Okay, further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that's what I wanted to do, with this. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve allowing a second wall sign to allow one sign on Newtown Road and one sign on the entrance, and the sign on Newtown Road needs to have the text change of, "Provided that such second wall sign shall not be larger than the size and scale provided in the depictions prepared by Cummings dated September 15th, 2020." And I would like to approve the consistency statement of the Village of Marvin Council finds the action to amend the village's zoning for the Marvin Gardens development standards to allow a second sign as revised, to be consistent with the land use plan and reasonable and in the public interest, because it will allow the public to locate and learn of the services while limiting the overall sign impact in a manner that will not impair on the primarily residential character of Marvin.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So, looks like we've got two of the four we're moving forward with.
Okay.
So congratulations with the, those...
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much for your consideration, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, um, next up, uh, we have, uh, um, public hearing, number two, open the public hearing for the Village of Marvin, two thousand twenty land use plan, I need a motion, open public comments.
They move.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, um, there may be, I know we have one letter that was sent to us from the resident, but we're gonna read that, um, before we do that, I just wanna establish some sort of ground rules if it is, you know, and we can be a little flexible on this, but, um, normally when we do public comments, uh, for these public hearing, we allow X amount of minutes for public, uh, comments, we allow three minutes, you guys can decide what-
Okay.
Ooh, I think that, oh gosh.
Getting a little feedback, so, um, and if you guys wanna amend that or change that, it's up to you, does anyone, or you wanna keep the, I don't know how many people we're gonna have speaking that are out there, it looks like we have at least three, four, five, six, it looks like twenty-some people that are on the web, um, WebEx, um, and then I know we have one, or you're reading one?
I have one submitted to me, and just, just to note, anybody that speaks needs to provide their address for the record.
Okay, yes, so if you are gonna speak, I would just say unmute your mic, and then I'll call on you based on what your name is up on the, um, uh, thing, and then we'll also read in, so I see one up already, um, but we won't start with that one.
I can go ahead and read that.
Before we go, let's, let's decide what kind of format we wanna have.
Good, Jamie.
I would say we keep it to three minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, three and not a second more, and I, I know people are gonna be passionate about this and be, and, and listen, I, I get it, um, there's a lot of time that's gone into this, and, and we wanna make sure we cover, I'd say three minutes, and then we move on, as long as we can get to, that allows us to get to everyone's and everyone's opinions is, is, um, shared throughout, so, I would say three minutes, and anybody with a petition, you can-
Yep.
Take care of that.
Sure.
Okay, is everyone aware of that? Bob?
Yep.
Three minutes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll leave it at three minutes, so again, a reminder, we'll have you state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes when you start talking, and, uh, I think we'll have the first one read, if that's okay?
Okay.
Um, it's gonna be read by the clerk, and you can announce who it is, and then you can start with that one, because this is not a short, so.
Okay, I'll read fast, uh, this is from Casey Crawford of nine eighteen Rising Road. As a resident of the Village of Marvin, I offered this submission in opposition to the adoption of the proposed twenty twenty land use plan. Prior to purchasing the acres of land on Rising Road that serve as my family's current residence in the Village of Marvin, I conducted careful research to ensure that my financial investment in said land would be protected. Specifically, prior to making the commitment to buy and build in this community, I was informed of the strict ordinances in place regarding low density, high acreage per single family home, and the village is interested in preserving the quiet, equestrian, private community that it had always been. After many conversations and a lot of town council meetings, I relied on the promises of the Village of Marvin and made the decision to buy and build in this community. My extended family and I spent several years working with the village to make sure that the division of our lots complied with the acreage requirement and that our road was in compliance with the Department of Transportation standards. Now less than three years into our residence here, the Village of Marvin is threatening to abandon many of the restrictions and promises that I both relied on, relied upon, and worked very hard to comply with by its twenty twenty land use plan proposal. It is my contention that this proposal does not adhere to the historic development patterns of Marvin and ignores the desires of its residents. As previously stated, my family and I live in, live on Rising Road. A quick look at the twenty twenty land use plan reveals that the proposed village center surrounds my property. Needless to say, I am opposed to any high-density residential or commercial development adjacent to areas that are very low-density residential, and I will use all resources at my disposal in order to prevent any such development adjacent to my property. In addition to the fact that the proposed village center is adjacent to my property and not in harmony with its current use, the twenty twenty, the proposed twenty twenty land use plan and the location of the village center cannot be justified by residents' desires. First, there is no great public outcry for a village center, the land use plan priorities are based on a survey that was returned by only eighteen point three percent of village residents. Even with this low participation level, the residents identified the creation of a village center as the fourth highest goal behind preserving Marvin's attractive, low-density, family-oriented neighborhoods. Sixty-nine percent of those surveyed were not in favor of increasing residential density, only fifty-four percent of those surveyed supported developing a village center district, and only seventeen supported, uh, in developing any commercial districts. Given that only seventeen percent of the households support developing commercial districts, the proposed village center should not contain a commercial component. Of those that support a commercial development, sixty percent of households supported commercial development of a village center on Newtown Road between Marvin Road and Marvin School Road. Given that only fifty-four percent of households were in favor of a village center district and only sixty percent return, sixty percent favored the Newtown Road location, that means only thirty-two point four percent of households responding to the survey supported a village center at Newtown Road. The twenty twenty land use plan itself- And the rest will go into the record.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's see, next up, uh, if you wanna unmute, I'll call on you, and then the rest can mute, if that's okay.
And I'll, I'll mute us so that we don't have feedback.
Okay, I see, uh, first up, is that Jake?
Jake Feeling.
Feeling, Jake Feeling?
It is Jake, and I apologize for the, uh, feedback, that was, uh, here she comes, that's my wife, that's fully her fault, but that's okay, you put that on the record, I appreciate it. Um, hi everyone, Jake Feeling, nine one nine Rising Road, yes, I am Casey's neighbor, you just heard that read, um, and I have some concerns as well, but just a little history, uh, I am on the Marvin Heritage District Committee, I think that's the name of it, but we are, we have been tasked to choose what we want in the proposed downtown plan. But just a little history, and I think that underscores a little bit of what you just heard from Casey. Couple of years ago, my sister-in-law, uh, Michelle Crawford, who is actually on camera right there next to Casey and I, uh, were both thinking about starting small businesses, and we didn't know where we wanted to put them, but we figured we might as well start around our house. We talked to a lot of the landowners that, uh, are now participating in the downtown plan, and the word that we got from all of them was that, sure, they'd be interested, but there's no way it's happening anytime soon, um, and probably we're anywhere from five to ten years out for it to be realistic happening. Uh, I shelved my idea, Michelle ended up opening, uh, her own company, uh, about five, ten miles away in South Carolina. So then fast forward, here we are today, and yes, so I appreciate you setting up the history earlier, uh, with John, I know a lot of work is going into this, you've mentioned several times the two thousand four land use plan, which calls for, um, I think the, the exact words are, "small-scale potentially, small-scale independent hospitalities such as cafes, bed, and breakfast, and inns," um, and then you referenced that plan, the two thousand four plan, several times in the previous section around light pollution and around sign pollution, judging, you're making your decision on this previous Marvin Gardens conversation on the two thousand four plan, which you're now talking about updating to a twenty twenty plan with a downtown district with far more signs and lights. And so, again, here I am now on the Heritage Committee, finding out that, two months ago when I was recruited to that committee, that was when the land use plan for twenty twenty was finalized, and I just find it odd timing that I was recruited to a committee that essentially put the cart before the horse, which, if you look at the minutes from our last meeting, was the reason we stopped our meeting, because consultants hadn't yet been asked what we should put into downtown, and we were being asked what businesses we'd like to see into downtown. So it just seems like consistent cart before the horse, um, we wanna, we wanna be part of this, like, we're here for a long time, we wanna be friends with our neighbors, we wanna get along with people, we just feel like this is happening way too fast and in the wrong order. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. All right, anyone else looking across the board there? I see call-in user six has their mic off.
They might just not have a mic, um-
Call-in user six was the person earlier.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, you wanna, just, you wanna just call in each, because they might all just be here to make public comments.
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else to say? Speak now, Bueller.
Hi, um-
Good.
My name is Lorraine Russell, I live at nine one two Rising Road, um, sorry, there's a little bit of feedback there. I am neighbors with Jake and Michelle and Casey, I just wanted to speak up about this plan, um, hi Joe, good to see you.
Me too.
I used to coach for hockey with Joe at Marvin Ridge, um, I don't, as Jake said, I don't think that it's necessarily that we are one hundred percent know on this, but I think that it's moving too quickly. I think that we're talking about changing the landscape of this community that we all came to for a reason, for its quiet, for its family, for its community feel, and we are rushing forward, or the, the planning committee is rushing forward into something that is shown our community doesn't really want. If you looked at this survey that you guys took, I think it was less than twenty percent were on board with doing any sort of commercial development at all. I think that the highest percentage was around eighty percent was looking for green spaces and, you know, quiet development to keep the historical nature of this city. Um, we just heard ten minutes from you guys deciding over, you know, a few extra lights and the light pollution that that would cause, I think we need to take a big pause and step back and, and really think about what this commercial planning is gonna cause and the change that it's going to affect in our town, and really look at what the residents want and realize that this is not what our residents want. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Lorraine, good to see you.
Head of the Ben after Rain?
Yeah, who's that?
Hi, this is Paige Feeling, I'm Jake's wife, who just spoke a minute ago on Rain's sister-in-law, um, and I just wanted to, I'll, I'll be brief, because I feel like Rain and Jake said a lot of what kind of all feeling, but I just wanted to chime in that we really, we all love Marvin, we've been seriously living here, we love the neighbors, we love the feel of the community, and exactly why we moved here is exactly what it's lived up to since we've been here. I think that what we're all asking for and expecting is, is pretty reasonable, and I think we're coming about it in a very reasonable manner, and we're just asking that that be, you know, treated and considered in, in, and equally reasonable and considered manner, so, thank you guys tonight for your time, and, um, on to the next member.
Thank you, all right, just looking through, anyone else wanna undo their, I see Shrag Patel, or Montel? Oh, Shrag?
Yeah, Shrag, uh, this is Shrag Patel, and I was wondering if it's the right time to talk about the Bourne Road intersection, uh, or are we going section by section?
Yeah, this, we're talking about the land use plan right now.
Just the land use plan at this time?
Well, I guess he means to say that the future land use map is part of the land use plan.
The future what?
The future land use-
Yeah, but I, I-
Yeah, it's, it's part of the land use plan, if he wants to talk about the map.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, this would be a good timer, sure.
All right, thank you, thanks for the opportunity, guys, and, uh, I just wanted to-
We need your address, Shrag.
Shrag, one second, your address?
Uh, yes, uh, I live in Backsaw, uh, seventy-one hundred Yellow One Phil, uh, but we own the property, uh, twenty-one zero, uh, two Providence Road South, the parcel next to the corner of the Bourne Road, uh, and we had put in an application to develop the corner.
Okay, so which, which, um-
This is called a comment time, this is not back and forth.
Okay, go ahead, I just wanna make sure where he's at, he's just giving us his address, but you can, go, go ahead.
On the timer.
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted to, uh, bring up the point that, uh, we heard today, uh, earlier from Rohit, that, uh, the land use plan that was originally being considered for this corner, uh, for a commercial, conditional commercial development has been, uh, no longer considered, uh, so, I just wanted to put a case, or, uh, put a point, point of view forward on that, uh, aspect, uh, since the corner is going to be quite busy already, the current property, the two parcels that we have, it is going to be almost impossible to develop as a residential property or, uh, even have, uh, as a family residence, uh, so that's why we are putting a plan to develop it as a commercial property, and, uh, we are open to working with the town, uh, following all the rules and regulations and, uh, what are restrictions, constraints that we have to work with, uh, but we would like to consider this as a conditional commercial.
Thank you, Shrag.
And that's, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, I thought I heard someone else coming in.
Yeah, Montel Watson. Hey, guys.
Montel.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Hello, hello, uh, my name is Montel Watson at nine eleven Rising Road, uh, appreciate you guys giving us opportunity to, to come on today and, and be able to speak into this. A big thing for me, you know, I moved from the city, uh, and, and one of the main reasons I moved from the city to Marvin, uh, is a lot of the pieces that a lot of you've already spoke about, right, the green spaces, the quietness, uh, being able to, to, to raise a family, um, you know, out here, and the, the current plan that's, you know, that's being put up is, is, is something that is, for me, contradicting to what you guys had spoke about a little bit earlier in regards to, uh, preserving the residential kind of feel and culture of what Marvin is today, um, and for me, it would, you know, I, I think that it would be very, very good to, to work with the actual individuals that live here at Marvin, to just kinda talk through what that should look like, um, and just to reiterate what a lot of the other folks on the call have talked about in regards to just slowing down, right, slowing down and giving us an opportunity to, to speak into something else, because just from reviewing the plans, um, being able to, you know, to, to keep their residential feel, it will be completely changed, completely changed, um, with having, you know, a commercial that booms up against the property, behind the property, um, and it just, it just will be a completely different thing than what I had moved here for, um, so, just as a direct ask, we would love to, to be a part of the conversation, you know, as you guys are thinking about this, um, and considering making a vote that, that we slow it down and, and allow, um, more people to speak into it. I'm also a, a firm believer of data, and the data that was spoke about earlier, you know, when you were reading, I believe Casey's letter, um, it just goes to showing points towards needing more data, um, and not being able to, to, to make a quick decision off of, um, you know, the, the current people that, that weren't able to vote and giving more people of, an opportunity to, to, I guess, speak into, you know, what the plans are. Um, uh, that's, that's pretty much everything for me, and I appreciate you guys giving us opportunity to speak into it.
Thank you, Montel. Okay, looking across the board, anyone?
Chris Ross.
Chris Ross? You had, you muted off for a little bit there, did you wanna say something?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
And once again, need the address.
Chris, just, just your name and your address, and then you can-
Uh, my name is Chris Russell, nine twelve Rising Road, and you brought the word from my wife, Lorraine, just wanted to add a couple things, um, I, and again, I oppose this new adoption of the twenty twenty land, but just looking at the data, and, just like everyone else has said, you know, we want, we wanna have a good relationship with our neighbors, and as things close in on this, it's, uh, it can be a little uncomfortable, um, a couple of the things I was reading in the plan, um, the percentages really are, are showing what the residents want, and out of seventy-five percent of those residents, they don't want commercial development, eighty-seven percent of those want traffic calming programs, and seventeen percent of them wanted to develop, didn't want, wanted developing commercial districts to be the least, so, for me, living here at Rising Road and the beautiful properties we have, and looking at the two thousand four plan and, and trying to keep the tradition of the equestrian look of Marvin, I, again, I think we really need to take a look at this and slow it down. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, Chris. Jer Gerber, or I thought, I saw you take your mic off there for a second, or did you wanna say something?
Yes, hi, um, Jameson Jerry Gerber, uh, we live at two thousand four Blackridge Court, um, somewhere back in the Battleburg Division- Somewhere back in the Meadowlark Division, not far from all our Rising Road neighbors. And we just want to essentially reiterate all the sentiments of some of what they've shared so far. Really pointing to the insights that have come from the data for the survey that has taken place. And I think that that speaks volumes in itself as well as, you know, the words that everybody's shared today and some of the other meetings and through letters that I know some of my neighbors in particular have shared. We have actually come from the city living, I guess, so to speak, recently, normally two years ago moving from New York City. It's just really a big part of why we chose, you know, Union County, Marvin in particular, and this area in particular to have a different way of living that is really revolving around quiet, peaceful equestrian, you can see, behind us, community. So, I mean, it's very important to us from our own personal perspective but that of knowing how much it would even more so impact our neighbors. And that's important to us as well, that the quality of life that they sought out and worked very diligently to maintain is upheld by the village of Marvin and any developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Looking down on the list, I know we've heard from, anyone else want to unclick? If they want to, now's your chance, I guess.
Hey, I'd like to actually speak. I didn't yell out the letter, but if I may, just be, oh, yeah, with my mic down here. First of all, I wanted to do my, thank you all. I've done the yes endeavor to pay a private debt. My name's Casey Crawford, 918 Rise Road.
Right, I think the council's telling me that your comments were considered your three minutes, I guess, so.
No, respectfully, my wife's sitting here at my baggy's for three minutes.
She just talked.
No, she did not.
No, she did not. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
We're trying to be fair here, so.
I understand. Thanks, you deserve it for that. I appreciate you guys have a tough job, or I really do. And I also appreciate that, you know, you guys are all citizens of Marvin and neighbors. And I think that is obviously the point of a village council. And I think that's our hope here as well, to talk to you all as, as neighbors, as, you know, folks that have served, trying to advance the wishes really of the entire village. And I think, guys, again, you've been at work at this for a long time. I remember it was going on when we were getting par zoning, looked at and worked at. And so I think that's what you're hearing me say, say, can we go ahead? Four years this has been in process, let's extend this to another 60 days to make sure we get it right. And when 87% of residents of the village come back and say we want less traffic, more green space, and a quieter village, I see nothing that's documented that points to how more commercial extending on both sides of the church and a higher density commercial residential provides for that. So actually, the plan is being proffered flies directly in the face of the very feedback that was given in the 2019 survey. And that 2019 survey now being digested and kind of replanned for like what amendments were made in the plan that reflect the wishes of the village in the survey itself. But I can say to you, as newer residents, you know, if you did not fill out the response from the survey, we clearly have traumatic problems with having commercial that very strong on property on either side of the property. And it seems to me that for, it doesn't make a great deal of sense for the planning board to want to extend commercial on the other side of two churches, a cemetery, and a large residential tract and saying explicitly we don't want. Particularly for our Meadowlark neighbors who bought it through a neighborhood that is clearly designed for a residential and then now to drop commercial and potentially higher density residential on the front of their property. It really contradicts the vision of why a lot of us moved. And while this wouldn't be the time and place for any kind of legal action, I think what the council sets up for providing this is long and valid and very ugly legal exchanges between neighbors, which is the antithesis of what a village council, I think, seeks to do, which is unite and push forward a plan between the entire village we get behind, get excited about, and the entire village benefits from. And again, when I look at the number one desire of the village itself is for less traffic, more quiet, more peace and grace. As I heard many of you articulate earlier on some of the other topics. And this plan clearly doesn't do that. I think if you really want to go to center, we could like, we answered, talking about doing something just that new power intersection. But extending commercial past our property and broken up by two churches and a cemetery really seems like an overreach. And I just ask for a little bit more time to have some conversation with the planning board and the land use committee before we pull forward a plan that's going to cause years and years of really-
For the record, since you used your, are we muted?
No, speaking of the mic's direction.
Oh, just for the record, you used your wife's three minutes. Can I get her name?
Michelle Crawford.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? See other people? Looking for top right, Rose, up in the top right there? Top right for us, anyway.
Can you barely hear any of the roads here?
Yeah, barely hear you. Wait, let me, let us turn it up on this end here. Go ahead.
Once again, it's pulling my address.
Yeah, I can barely hear any of the roads. We're at 1209 Meadowlark Road. We're in the Meadowlark Farm Labor that Casey referred to. We've got 21 lots here ranging from four acres to seven acres. We border the new commercial area that's being thought about or planned about. We've got the smallest lot that borders the commercial area at five acres. And the fact that we're potentially talking about going to, you know, one acre per house, a commercial, we're against it. I just echo the comments other people made as well, but let's kind of think about this. Let's take our time. Let's make the right decision and let's not rush into this. Because I feel like we're kind of rushing into it.
Anything else? Jared?
Well, I filed a letter and Austin read it at one of the meetings. So, it's out there for the record.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I haven't seen anyone else click off their mic. I think we've heard from most residents up there. Thank you for sharing your comments for council. And at that, we will, I'll need a motion to close the public hearing if we don't have anyone else stepping up to speak.
So moved.
All's in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
I need a restroom break.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute restroom break, if you don't mind. And then we will reconvene in five minutes.
Need a motion to recess?
Need a motion to recess?
So moved.
All's in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
We're muted. I'm going to click the button. Oh, good lord.
All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting, regular meeting. So we've heard public comment at this point. And I guess I'll just open up the discussion to council if there are any comments.
Did we make a motion to close the public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, you did.
We did, yeah. So we are now at the discussion phase in consideration for the Marvin Land Use Plan. So, I mean, I'll go ahead and start and say, kind of give you this. This has been ongoing for some time. For all of you that, you know, I confirmed this with the attorney just a few minutes ago, that all towns are required to have a land use plan in place. That could be big trouble for us lawsuit-wise if we didn't have. And I would also say that nothing commercial has been approved at all. It just is, it's a mechanism that towns are required to have, if I'm not mistaken, to kind of get a feel for what it is. But the approval process for any commercial, high density, any of that, is a long drawn-out process. Even uses at that point are discussed. We had a lot of discussion about what kind of uses we would even allow in here, let alone how much we would allow and all that sort of thing. So we're, I can assure you, we're far away from any zoning. And we are required by law to have a current land use plan that is workable. I know-
Can I ask one question? I don't want to interrupt you, but just for clarity's sake. If we have a land use plan, do we have to adhere every single little development that we have in there that's potentially a commercial property? That does, if we come in to rezone, can you tell us how it works in terms of? A lot of the questions that the public has seem to be about the village center district. That's not even-
That's zoning. Now, there's a difference. Your land use plan is a guide. It should state that at the beginning, and I think it does. But a comp plan is a guide, so it helps guide you in your decisions. And then ultimately, you make zoning decisions. And you can go against or with the land use plan. And that's your reasonableness and consistency. If you go contrary to it, you state the reasons why. It can be, we aren't there yet, we aren't ready yet, we've changed, we haven't updated it. But you still have your zoning authority, and that's when your decisions are made. So, the plan is required because they want people to have some way to look at what is anticipated and so you can plan so you don't have these zoning decisions that come out of, from lack of expectations. However, the board can change the plan and they can vote ultimately the zoning against the plan. The zoning is the zoning, and that requires the ordinance and goes to a separate process with a separate public hearing for the parcels involved.
So the village center district is a topic that needs to go through a rezoning process that is a whole separate process aside from the land use plan?
It'll have to be approved through zoning, and there would have to be a zoning district.
So council can later decide if they do not want the village center district, even though it's in the land use plan?
Yeah, they just want to follow it. They can modify the plan, but they don't have to put that or they can, the use of plan is a guide, but it's not the binding. The zoning decision is what is binding, once you place that.
So come February, March of 2021, if we get information back, if the public says they don't want the village center district for whatever reason, if they've approved this land use plan, council can still decide not to do the village center district?
Absolutely. They use this to help them as a guide, but it's not, it's not the binding decision. And that is the zoning, that's separate. So it'll take a lot more steps to put zoning on the property and that district.
Is there a public process and a rezoning process?
Absolutely. There has to be a public process, and there has to be a public hearing. There has to be publication of the notice, the posting requirements.
And probably public input meetings as we had for this land use plan prior to the public hearing, correct?
Yes, I mean, there'll be public notification of the property owners involved, all the posting requirements, and then the publication in the paper, on the agenda, everything else.
So the village center district being defined in the land use plan is just a conceptual idea?
Correct. We still don't even know where our town hall is going to be, let alone anything else, quite frankly. But we envision, I think, and past councils have envisioned for the town hall to be in the village center. And we've identified this for, ever since I've been here, 2013. This strip of land is the village district. They called it all the historic district. They named it all different kinds of things. And it's just, what would you allow? That was the big issue. What would you allow? Wouldn't you allow? But we're not even there yet. That'll come with the zoning if it is in place. And the use restrictions, allowable uses. Size, architecture, all the standards. That all comes later. This is, it's a guide of where you think you may be going, but sometimes you change your mind. You learn more information or sentiment changes.
Councils change.
Councils change.
So things change.
Things change, but this is, this is not, this is not imposing zoning. So where I was going with this, and here's my fear, and this is for those that are listening, because I lived through this and I fought tooth and nail and tried to get other municipalities to kind of fight this with the state. Each landowner in this strip of area has by right to do whatever it's currently zoned for. And we can't do, if they come in with a by right plan, we can't say anything and do anything as long as they follow the current ordinances. If they comply with the current zoning, it's by right, correct? That said, and this is not, you know, oh, this could happen. It did happen. And here's the thing, they didn't even, they didn't even come before us like the 711 did to ask for what they wanted to do. They basically was just a meeting that we held. And, you know, at 50,000 feet, the council wasn't interested in what they were talking about. And I think at one point, it was maybe 300 or 400 apartments for elderly. And it just didn't fit our current land use plan at the time. Well, that individual, that landowner had the right, and he did. He took it to the state legislature. And that person was Tommy Tucker. I'll call him out now. He's no longer the state senator. And what he did, that state senator did for that landowner, for whatever reason, and I called him out on it, is he plucked that piece of property out of Marvin and it became under the Union County rules. And they were able to do a lot of things. So my fear is that if we don't work with the current landowners of this district, because we're mindful of the traffic. If you haven't listened, we've even talked about removing all the 18-wheelers that come through here and preventing them and rerouting them because our goal is to possibly own roundabout to roundabout, controlling the speed, controlling who comes through here on a regular basis where we have 16,000 things. But if there's a landowner that happens to be in good graces with a state legislator, a state senator, and he's able to do what they did, I fear for that in Marvin on this, you know, because that could happen. It has happened right up the street on, off of Ray Road and north, just a catty corner from Coles. And when I see, when I look at Coles and I see what they did without, with Union County approval, and I look at it and I drive by it and I see garbage containers sitting outside there, they had no control. We lost all control of what it could be. And with this, and I think you'll see when you look at publics, even though they were under, I think it's conditional with what they had, but it was under the former land use plan. I think you'll see how that's planned out, what we allow. It goes in, they were smart. They said, hey, tell us what you won't want. I said, no, you tell us what you want to put in there. We'll decide if it's allowable or not. So I would say this council is very mindful of what would we even allow in here. And again, we're so far away from it, but I do fear that landowner saying, you know what? You know, they're not going to work with me. I don't necessarily. And this, I promise you, it was not even a meeting that came before council. It was a meeting with two council members and a landowner who decided to go straight to the senator and was plucked out of Marvin. It happened, and I don't want to see that happen. I'd rather work with Marvin landowners, figure out what we can do. And there's a lot of meetings ahead, I can assure you. If you're right in the heart of all this, there's a lot of meetings ahead of what we would like, what we wouldn't like. Government moves slow, as you know, and, you know, I don't see anything happening. But that's from a 50,000-foot level, you know, we have to by law have a land use plan. I always understood it as a guide. It's not, this is what we're doing. In fact, you can't tell me, there's a lot of noise out there from some individuals saying that we're going to be putting all kinds of things in here. And I can tell you that's just nonsense. That was never talked about in this council.
Can I, can I speak real fast to the steps that remain to the village center district, or heritage district, whatever we're calling it? The next, you know, we're currently in the process of a feasibility study, which I think one of the members in attendance here tonight spoke to him being on the strategic planning committee. That's a part of this committee that is involved with kind of coming up with some recommendations for the planning board to consider in terms of the uses, the architect, the design, in terms of all those things. But also, we're undergoing a feasibility study. For us, it even assess if it's currently economically feasible for us to do this. So, yes, we do have the village center district as a conceptual idea in the land use plan. When the feasibility comes back, the feasibility study comes back, what happens after that is we would have the creation of the zoning district. So we would actually have to rezon the process, I'm sorry, rezon the land that all of these property owners are speaking of. From that, you'll have several public input sessions. The rezoning is going to require us to have several public hearings. And if the rezoning is even approved at that point, site plans have to be submitted. They have to be approved by the planning board and council. So there's a lot of steps that would remain in the creation of the village center district if we even got to the point of the establishment of it. Do you have any other?
Yeah, I mean, just to speak one more thing about DFI and the feasibility study is that it's very prevalent- is that it's very prevalent that if we were to do a district like this at all, it would be very low-density, very low-impact, low-density residential and low-density commercial and large buffers. And they wonder, DFI has done all sorts of, you know, scales of projects, and they wonder, you know, if you go to low-density, then will developers even find such a project feasible, you know, to construct? And so that's why we're doing a feasibility study in the first place before we, before we rezon these properties like right off the bat. We want to know if a, like a, you know, a really village-feeling downtown would even work. And if it doesn't, then, you know, we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't allow them to increase the density, we would probably not do the district at all. In that, in that sense, we're, I mean, it's really, a lot of people said, putting the cart before the horse, and I also struggled, you know, in coming up with a timeline. It is really a chicken and an egg issue, because in order to know what they should evaluate for feasibility, we need to come up with certain inputs. And in order to come up with certain inputs, we need to have this committee, you know, tell us what they think they would like to see. So I understand, I understand what they're saying, and it is, we're trying to, we're trying to make it work to get to a point where we can even know that if we're doing this or not.
But I want to reiterate, Chaplain, if you don't mind, this 2020 land use plan is being proposed with a Village Center District. Does that mean that it has to be done in five years? Does it mean it has to be done at all?
No, you don't have to rezon a property until something comes, and you don't have to follow, it's a guide. You look at it for direction, but you do not have to follow it. And you can amend it.
The whole premise of it being in here is because just conceptually, we've talked about it, we think it's a good idea.
It's a plan. It's a conceptual plan.
So the last land use plan was adopted in 2004. We have not had a land use plan updated since 15 years ago.
Which is highly unusual. They're supposed to be updated every few years. It's supposed to be more of a fluid process, but to keep it, as councils change, as plans change, as the community changes, you get new ideas, you get, you get changes in attitudes and what people want, and you're supposed to keep the plan updated and fluid.
So if council adopts the land use plan tonight, the options for the Village Center District are if they could implement it next year, they could implement it five years, they could implement it not at all?
Correct. And they can change this plan in one year, two years, or five years.
Again, I think that's one of the reasons John Jones and their group worked so long on it, because it hadn't been done and revised. So they took a lot of time with this process and back and forth, and I know council has reviewed it. But again, we've looked at it always as a kind of a plan at 50,000 feet, not, you know, in the weeds of high-density or anything where, I don't think, and I will go on the record now saying I've never, you know, supported high-density. So it's just, but if it's, if it's something that could work, I think, then, you know, that's going to take time and a lot of decision, a lot of discussion. And I'd like even more of a, a different type of, even if we had to call a meeting, and I'll throw this out there, for more of a dialogue-type meeting. We had an opportunity not long ago where we had town hall, and you were able to talk about just about anything, and that was dialogue. Questions all came to the council, and we were able to discuss that. And again, if you were here earlier, you'd know sometimes these meetings would go till 2:00 in the morning, and it's because sometimes they get out of hand and stuff. So I'm all for a special meeting, you know, to discuss, you know, looking at what these committees are putting together, but also having more of a dialogue, back-and-forth interaction between council and residents. And I'll leave it at that, less is more, as my mayor Protem always says. So I'll leave it at that with my comments. Anyone else want to opine? What is that?
We're getting cats.
Okay.
So we're getting a.
Their end goal is a big strip mall and a bar. Yeah. It's not the.
I guess that brings up a good point. We found a deed restriction that requires us to use our property only for public uses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just on that.
What's that?
Yeah, the corner property is for municipal.
Municipal purposes only.
Oh, for that corner.
Can't be used for anything but municipal purposes.
Right, we signed that.
Deed it that way a couple of years ago, so that can never be used for, so there goes that comment. One comment that they, or someone made.
Okay. All right, everybody's, they had public comment time.
Okay. Well, I left it to council. Any other comments or?
Can you stop it from that? I don't know if I can do it after.
Okay. Andy, you got anything?
Nope.
Jamie? Bob?
No, Bob, I will chime in. I would say that I appreciate Mr. Proffert's feedback, and I really appreciate Jake's participation in the strategic meeting. You know, when I, you know, decided to run for council, I was aware of last fall, this survey, that I participated in myself, and, you know, the results came back, because the results came back. Of 1,803 households, 333 people responded. Of that amount, 54% said they were interested in something light, commercial, something downtown, or in a downtown or some sort of area. My knowledge going into the council position was that property owners, from what I had been told, were all sort of on board with something happening in this particular area. And specifically, it was being built around the fact that we needed a new town hall. So I just appreciate, you know, the position I'm in is to, like with everybody else, is to, you know, meet the needs of the public, and I appreciate, you know, the feedback that we've heard tonight. So I want to thank everybody for participating.
Thanks, Bob. Kim?
You know, I appreciate everybody's input, and I'm glad that you joined the meeting and made public comments. As Christina said, as Rohit says, Mayor, the mayor said, this is a guide, and the Village Center District is a small portion of this. This is a village-wide guide for multiple projects, multiple things, that, you know, that's, you know, not just the Marvin Heritage District. So, you know, it's, again, it's a guide. It's a, it's a, it's a thought, it's a plan, but it's not necessarily going to be implemented. It may be implemented, but it's going to be implemented with a lot more public input. So, but we need to have it, it needs to be updated. And this has been worked on since before I got in office, so well over three years. And so I'm not sure that we're rushing to approve this. It's been years in the making. So I'm good.
May I ask a question? And maybe this is for you, Rohit. We're in the middle of negotiating with Union County and other municipalities on ETJs, which are, how was your?
Extra territorial.
It's not territorial. Extra territorial.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Jurisdictions, which are basically what we are known as the doughnut hole of municipalities. And we are now working through a group called Booma, the municipalities, working to basically get in front of Union County and say, let us handle this. So knowing what we know, which are land that is in play in these ETJs, and if we were to get our way with the county, and this county said, yeah, why don't you guys take care of it, since you guys can agree between Weddington, let's say, and Marvin, and you guys can agree on the ETJ, we'll let you decide how it's run. Maybe they come to that conclusion, we don't know yet. With that said, is there any land that could potentially be considered where this land use plan would work? I mean, like for, you know, for, from an identity of, I mean, people use the word "commercial" and they get scared because they think of downtown, high-density, all that kind of stuff. But we obviously put a commercial area at Publix. We just did ribbon-cutting service for that, and that's, that's on a pretty busy street. But we have to have the land use plan in place. Would that consider ETJ? And I don't know the answer to it, so I'm asking the question. Would that be considered under our, could be considered under our jurisdiction, and they would look at us and say, okay, developer has to come to us to get approvals, and we would have to have something to say, yeah, we would, we would maybe allow commercial there. What do you, what do you got for us?
Yeah, I think I get what you're asking. And when you first create an ETJ, you still have to use your equivalent of zoning, so if that property was zoned residential in the county, you would then, we would apply our residential zoning. They would, they would, they would still have to be zoned commercial for us to then regulate the commercial development. They would still have to.
Yeah, that'd be, but we couldn't change it because it's out of our jurisdiction. We couldn't change the zoning. The county could do that.
Right, the county could do that, but pretty much everything in our, if we took that annexation area and that, that whole thing was our ETJ, pretty much everything in it, except for what's already commercially built, is zoned residential. And there isn't really, I mean, maybe Crane and Ray Road at the very edge of it, but that's, I don't know. I don't, I don't really see any other, like, big block of land that is kind of at a juncture like this one that the Village Center could fit in.
I'm not saying Village Center has to fit in, I'm just wondering about land that's available, that's considered on the ETJ in between, that has no man's land, they're not Weddington, they're not Marvin, but would we, if we're going to have some say, and say county gives us the authority and gets it off their plate, we're going to have some say of what's done there.
Right.
It's still going to require an approved land use plan, whether it's commercial or residential, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We would have to heavily revise our future land use map, because specifically, if you look at the current one, planning board specifically did not want to put any land uses in the annexation area because it's not in Marvin right now. So we now, now we do have an ETJ. You see the ETJs that we originally applied for, we have a proposed ETJR40 and a proposed ETJB. We would have to basically revise the map to fill in the whole area with whichever ETJ we would want to use in those areas.
And keep in mind, and this is before I was here, that my understanding was council at one point tried to work with, and they said, the council didn't work with them, the landowners. And this is across the street where now is a three-story storage facility. There was an opportunity years ago before me, before this council, where council could have worked with that property owner, but because that property owner, my understanding, owned the property at such a low price, they were free to do pretty much whatever they did, wanted to do. And what did they put there? They put in a three-story storage facility that abuts Marvin, which is what I don't want to see. And again, if we have a land use plan that is just a guide, you have multiple council members and meetings and all that to determine what zoning goes in there and that. It's just, I've seen what's happened in my short, well, seven years of being here, and I just, I'd rather work with landowners than have them be removed and we have no say. And that's, I'll leave it at that. So we'll, are all the council members done commenting on this issue?
Yep.
Okay. Is there going to be? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion, or where do we want to go from here?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Marvin 2020 land use plan.
All right. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, so next up, we have Village Hall Architect and Design Update.
So two real quick things. If you look at the attachment in your agenda packet for the plans, the Village Hall plans, we had some discussions at the last meeting about making a few minor changes. Just wanted to let you know that the top floor that you see here, this floor, it's a faux floor, so it opens up into the meeting room, so there's actually not a second level. The expansion levels would be on the sides of the wings where we could expand as we grew. And so therefore, I didn't make any changes to, or didn't tell the architect to make any changes to, to anything in that meeting room, because the open space room here, again, was for future use as well. This was not, this little line that we thought was the canyon wall was not.
I mean, I can't even, nobody's paying attention to me. Can we take a five-minute recess? I need, I need a five-minute recess.
Okay. I'll make the motion to a five-minute recess. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We're live.
Okay. Need a motion to reconvene?
For me.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Christina, you were?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's start over.
The floor that you see here, the second level, it's not an actual second level, it's just a faux floor. So that big opening area, the windows are going to open up into the meeting room, so the, the meeting room will be elevated, the ceiling, and natural light will be coming through. The expansion areas would be on the wings here, we could expand as we grew.
But there would be stairs for that, for storage.
No, there's nothing up there.
It's just an atrium, basically.
Yeah, it's an atrium.
So there's not a second, unfinished second floor?
No.
Okay.
So.
Like, it's like, the new councilwoman, it's been divided.
Any office space that would be needed later in the future would expand out these side wings.
Okay.
There is already an existing porch on the back, it's just not very clear because this is a hand drawing. And then we did not, I told him not to do anything with this open room, this open office, because it was, again, slated for future use as well. So we could put cubicles in there, we could come back and close it in at a later date if we wanted to put more offices there, and just leave that open for now until we see what the needs are in the future, and that would be kind of the cheapest option.
Makes sense.
We also discussed taking this smaller conference room and kind of bumping it out a little bit and making the lobby, lobby smaller, but as he and I had conversations, he said that he thought we needed some pre-function rooms, so if we had, like events tonight where we had people come in for proclamations, where we had large families come in, they could kind of gather in this pre-function area before they went into the formal area. So left it at that. I told him to go ahead and start putting it into CAD so that we can actually see better drawings with measurements. So he's doing that, and we should have some finals back on that. We can change them at that point.
So if I'm guessing that's, that lobby is about eight feet deep, is that correct?
I have no clue.
I would say 1/8 inch equals one foot, so that looks like an inch. So you walk in, you basically have your lobby is maybe from the wall to here, I guess. And that's a long lobby, right?
We'll get actual drawings and measurements back next month or two.
That concept sketch or?
Yes.
It does say 1/8 inch equals one foot.
The next thing I just wanted to mention is we finally got the agreement with them updated. There were a lot of revisions that we had to go back and forth, and some of the changes that we made in there is we took out interior design, and that basically is something that I felt like we can do in-house with, we have Mayor Protem and Mayor on this subcommittee that we've got for.
For design?
For design, so we could go through that.
No, that was off.
Interior design, take me off that now.
That was off.
And then we, we only had six site visits during construction, so just wanted to let it out. And those are really the only, the only things. I do not have a civil engineer currently, because we're waiting to see where we're going to go, and then once we decide that, we will get information out to get a civil.
So I think, can I ask a question to council? Looking at this drawing, and is that, is that more warm and fuzzy, based on what we have from the drawings last time? Are we all okay with this?
I like it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I like it too. I mean, I think it speaks to. I mean, I think it speaks to, you know, where we're at and, you know. So I think I like it a lot, and I'm glad we changed it. Anything else, Christine?
That's it.
That meeting room right now is, looks to be, well, under... It's pretty large without the 20 by 24 things. Yeah. It's more than what... And again, I keep saying, go to Wesley Chapel and look at that space.
But it's still smaller than what the original...
Does it like Wesley Chapel? Is that still... It's small. It's about the same size, but it can be moved into partitioned to 20 by 20 office space cubicles in there. And you can... We talked about putting a false wall?
No, that's a wall there.
It's a wall now?
That's a wall there.
Okay. So it's a little bit smaller than Wesley Chapel to me. And trust me.
And it's still, it's still far smaller.
With what we did at the church, if we ever got to, you know, down the road, future meetings where it's gonna have a lot of people, we can always use the church facility. If we knew through some sort of feedback that we were gonna have huge meetings, I don't foresee that many of them, but when we do, we have options.
We also have the option to take that wall out in the future if we so decide to make the meeting room larger, as long as it's not a load-bearing wall.
Well, I mean, we may just make it a partition wall.
That's what I'm saying. As long as it's a partition wall and not a load-bearing wall, it can always come down and we can always extend that room.
We'll have plenty of opportunity to change things. So this is just update.
All right. Anything else on the update?
That's it.
Okay. And that's both, Architect Contract Update too.
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we have unfinished business discussion. Consider adoption of the 2021 Village Council meeting schedule.
So...
They had a chance to look at the dates.
There was something... You've already done this. The purpose of this being on here was for y'all to pick out a date for your Springtown Hall. You said you wanted to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good call, Jeff.
I did not get a chance to look at this, but I'm gonna have a conflict with Andy.
They can amend it later. I mean, if they approve this, y'all can amend it at a later date.
Yeah, you can say, hey, looking out for April...
So spring like April or spring like May?
I'm saying like February 5th and 6th, I wanna be in Vegas. My annual trip to Vegas.
We can move the, we can move the meeting to Vegas.
Ooh, let's go there for our retreat.
Just kidding. So that's the retreat weekend?
How about the next weekend, Andy?
That's fine.
So, wait, which weekend are you talking about?
Time of year, right.
Actually, the next weekend doesn't work for me. How about the 19th weekend?
So you're talking, moving the retreat to...
What'd you say?
My birthday weekend.
The 19th?
Yeah, well, yeah, the 20th is my birthday. And I'm turning the big six-oh, baby.
Oh, my God, are you that old? I'm just kidding. I sleep on cotton not.
I thought you gave me something special. So I'm good. I don't foresee me...
Or do you want to push it to the weekend before? The 29th of January?
I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean...
Christina, these dates, we're finally giving about budget preparation timelines and everything.
Oh, we have a new budget.
This has already been planned.
Yes.
What do you guys want to do, before or after? Speak, somebody talk, we gotta go. This meeting is taking forever.
We still have a lot to do.
I am good the 29th of January and the 30th is an option date. 5th and 6th are out. 12th I'm open, 19th I'm open, and the 26th I'm open.
Would you like to do the 12th and 13th?
No, I said I can't do that weekend.
You guys want to do it?
Do the 19th. Do that for...
19th and the 20th, 20th being a roll every day?
Yeah.
If we need it.
We've never needed that.
So good with ETJ? It's up for 19.
Did you even look at your calendar?
Bob, 19th, 5th new?
I have a very boring one.
So you're good?
All right, so 19th it is.
So now you just need a date for your Springtown Hall that you were talking about?
All right, so you guys want to do April, May?
May would be easier for staff and finance budgeting soon.
And be careful not to pick a Tuesday because of planning board.
I got it, I got it.
What are we letting it for?
How about May 12th? It's a Wednesday.
Unfinished.
Are you good with any?
All right, May 12th.
That's the only thing I have planned, so.
May 12th.
And what is May 12th?
May 12th is gonna be the Springtown Hall.
Are you guys, would you guys be fine with pursuing the same location as we did last time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Maybe we'll have more than...
20 people?
I have a class that night, but I can find out something for that by then.
I'm kind of classed.
Please, formation.
In person?
Yeah, we still, we're doing it.
Are you? Oh.
Seventy, eighty kids, and they divide it up and they count on every one of us teachers. And there's not many subs.
And there's not many kids going. All right, May 12th it is.
All right, I'll assume you'll send that out. And all of these will go out, and we just approve them and accept them, and they go right into our system, correct?
Yep.
It'll take more time, but I can do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, well, it was nice that I discussed this, otherwise I'd be lost. I know, I get it.
All right. Depends on all of my...
So we're all good with dates?
Yep.
Austin?
No, we...
Okay. So the dates for 2021 have been amended. I need a motion to approve the meeting scheduled for 2021 based on the amendments we changed here.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Gotta be quicker on the uptake, Bob.
I acknowledge that, so please.
Yeah, he has thought of it as well, too.
All right. Next up, discussion of vehicle purchase for park staff.
So basically, this is a capital project that we've discussed over the last years. And there's been some conflicting opinions based off past council. And at this point in time, we're at the point where we've been relying on a staff individual to use his vehicle for park purposes. We do have another full-time staff member now. It is a little bit of a conflict because of, we don't have proper equipment for this individual, the staff member, to perform his functions. We're also increasing our maintenance area in terms of, you know, we're getting ready to pick up Marvin Gardens, we'll fill his park, a pocket park. And so we're at the point now where we desperately need to really seriously consider getting a vehicle for our park individuals. This idea was brought up at the last council meeting. Y'all had requested to receive some more information regarding it. And so there's some options here for you to consider based off of a lease financing purchase, which is about anywhere from $13,000 a year to $5,000 a year, depending on how long we want to do the term.
$13,000? So why are the rates so high? They're giving, like, they're giving, like, they're doing a 0% financing.
I don't know, but the purchase price is about $25,000, and that's what we would be financing. I've crunched the numbers. We're still cheaper to do a 6% interest rate or 5% interest rate, whatever it is, to get it at state purchase, state contract purchase. We're getting it way cheaper than retail.
So the price is so low that they were trying to move 2020s. I know, because I was actually in the market for a similar vehicle. And 2020s, cheapest.
I know this is a 21.
Cheap money, I know. 2021, because it's, they're not gonna give you... If you're gonna ask for financing, you're gonna get the going rate because it's 2021, it's a new model. So they're not gonna do much discounting. If they do, they failed in designing their product, so you're not gonna see. So 2020, you'll get a better deal, you should be able to get a better deal on if they have them, which I think they can. But, you know, I don't know what's available on 2020.
We can look at estate contracts.
It's just four payments a year?
It would be four years at $6,700 a year.
Oh, a year, okay. A year, okay.
Which is 500 bucks more, essentially.
And we would just do an annual payment, is how we would do it.
Yeah. I have the belief that if you keep something longer than five years or four years, then you're buying it, you're not leasing it. I don't see us going through a lot of vehicles here. I see...
Oh, low mileage.
It's gonna be low mileage, so we could, you know... And I don't think we have to take, do the lease thing. But I think if we have a simple truck with the logo on it, it's definitely needed because right now we're requiring our workers to have this vehicle to... And keep in mind, we have to move lawn mowers and things like that around at times, and that's a challenge.
And the lease purchase is not really fully a lease. You buy it for a dollar after the lease is over. So we would still...
Right.
We would still own the...
After four years?
Yeah.
So then $7,000 a year times four is what?
Say, I'm sorry, say that again.
It's essentially, it's 6,700, so it's $28,000 to buy it.
Yes. Something like that.
So it's $28,000 to buy a $26,000 truck. So there's like $2,000 worth of interest over four years. Can't beat that with stick, pretty much.
$28,000.
And more.
Yeah, don't forget the dollar.
If council's interested in pursuing this, we can look to see if there's a 2020 option and bring back some actual action for you at the next meeting. Okay. Is there a consensus to move forward with obtaining more information?
Bob, you okay with that?
I, the, well, I'm looking at the fact of I'm, you know, like everybody else, I guess. I'm familiar with financing and I don't particularly, and I'm on it, I don't particularly like lease purchase programs. I think we ought to buy it outright. It's not gonna have that many miles, we can take good care of it. But I mean, that's just my opinion. I just think we should just make the purchase. If we have to, at the end of it, we have to pay a residual, am I got that right? I mean, that's what most companies are. Okay.
I agree. I'm not buying it like this.
Yeah, just buy it. And take, it's not gonna get by...
Ten years.
Basically, $2,500.
So basically, everybody's in agreement that we want to buy a truck. It's just a matter of how we're gonna obtain it. Is that the general consensus?
Yes, Andrew.
Oh, yeah.
We'll do more research.
I think it's a money aspect, and that's, yeah, that's what we're going with.
Okay. So yes, move forward with that. Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda is new business discussion. Consideration of canceling the annual tree lighting per recommendations of Parks Recreation and Greenlight Board.
So I'll take this real fast. Basically, Parks and Recreation thinks because of the war, thinks because of COVID and everything that's going on, that they feel like it's most suitable to go ahead and postpone this tree lighting event.
They suggest the alternative of just us communicating to the public to cut... The park would still be decorated, come out, take holiday photos, you know, take it all in, but not congregate in an event for the ongoing pandemic.
I think that's smart. I think that's what our attorney would recommend.
I am 100% disagreeing. I think that it's bad for the community's morale to shut everything down and continue to. It's an outright event. Requiring masks should be enough to prevent the spread of COVID outdoors. And I think that we need to, I think we owe it to the community to continue to provide ways for people to be socially interactive in a safe manner. And I think that just, you know, pushing this off because it's difficult or more difficult to put this on, I think is the wrong approach. I think we owe it to the community to continue to do stuff for the community.
So would the, in your vision of having it, would it be similar to the past years? Or would it be like where there's, because there was a lot of interaction. The kids were making stuff in certain workstations. And then there was people passing out hot chocolate and stuff like that. I'm just imagining, are we getting rid of all that?
We can't hand out food, we can't hand out drinks, we can't do crafts, we can't have people sitting on Santa's lap.
And you've still got to separate, even outside. They have regulations in this. There are some exemptions for governmental action, such as this meeting. They're still strongly encouraging everything. But the annual lighting event, it's more of a community event. So they're still gonna have restrictions, and you're still gonna have to be careful with the numbers of, with the guidelines and the requirements. Even outdoor events such as the Panthers, they don't allow...
I mean, we, I mean, you have had us cancel national light out for the same exact reason. We haven't got any further...
Because the governors...
And the governor just went from 25 people indoors to 10 people indoors. Again, it's indoors, so they're moving in the opposite direction. I get Andy's point, and I, I mean, I hate it, but I was...
You don't hate his point, you get his point.
No, I get his point, I don't hate his point. I hate it that we're talking about canceling this because I do get his point.
I'm gonna go back to what I said about Halloween. Unfortunately, there are people that make decisions that aren't adults. And then there are people that are adults that, you know what? You like the tree. You put it out there. You say that you're gonna do it. You don't have Santa, but you like the tree. And those who want to just have a night to go out and watch the tree being lit and cheer it from the car, blow your horn, do whatever you want to do. But it's saying that we're not gonna stop having Christmas because, because of COVID. No, we can't hand out the candy, we can't do all the other stuff. We can't do Santa, maybe Santa's there. But...
With a mask on?
You know what? This is just my, this is just my opinion that you are, you're gonna... We're gonna cancel Christmas this year because Santa can't come around to all the houses because he might have COVID. So my opinion would be, yes, we do have a tree lighting. We announce it to the public, and those who would like to come to Eiffel Park, come to Eiffel Park, and we're gonna have a tree lighting. If you want to wear your mask, if you want to get out of your car to see it, we can't control, we can't sit there and control that. But we can certainly say that we're having a tree lighting. That's just my opinion. We could, you know, I just... When I, when I saw this on the thing, I'm just like, how, how ridiculous are we? So again, I'm gonna go back to, is it six feet or is it masked? No one has ever given that answer. And yet, we're just, we just continue to just give in to the government going, let's just shut everything down until there's 100% no COVID. And when I said, I'm just like, hell, are these, we're gonna cancel Christmas? No, I agree with Andy. And I was, I was livid when this was even on there. I get it, there are things that we can't do. But damn, let's light the damn Christmas tree. And if you, if you want to come, come. I may not be there. I probably won't be there. I probably will be there, actually. I may not be there, I probably won't be there, I probably will be there, actually, because I had so much enjoyment, just the, the pure fact that we didn't stop what we're doing from a Village of Marvel standpoint, Halloween went off without a hitch, because there were kids that still went out Halloween trick-or-treating. This isn't, this isn't about us, it's about the kids. The kids saying, you know what, Marvin, it's shut down, hey, you know what, we're still gonna have Christmas, and I saw Santa.
I challenged the, the PRG board to come up with some, some different ideas to make this work. I, I say put it back on their board and let them come up with some ideas to make something happen, even if it's not the traditional thing, make something happen.
I, I mean, you can go to Charleston, and you can get on the, you can get on the horse and buggy, social distance, wear a mask, do whatever you want, and you can ride, and you can do a tour in Charleston. And why, in the life of me, could we not do that here with a, with a horse and buggy doing Christmas songs around, around the thing?
I can get on a plane with a hundred and fifty other people with a mask this close together every day, nobody says anything about that.
I thi- I think as, and to your point, you may end up causing more if you're having in, indoor events, I think it's, it's, uh, indoor events are the issue in, in close proximity to someone else in an enclosed environment, having it outdoor is, is, again, everyone makes their own decision, understanding the social distance.
That's my, that's my point, and again, we're not talking about, we're not, we're not talking about kids, I mean, we're talking about kids here.
Do you not, but do you not think that there is liability on the part, part of the village sanctioning an event?
You're lighting a tree, we're not, we're not saying, all we're doing is saying, we're gonna light a tree.
Well, then, then our, our Circle Greenway doesn't need to come up with anything creative, just light a tree.
So.
I mean, that's what they said.
The only thing I will say is, I got a call from a.
Hold on, all they said was, we're still gonna light the tree, they didn't say we're gonna light the tree, they said still decorate it and have a tree. But we're not gonna have all the other stuff to go along with it.
And it wouldn't be one solid event, it'd be lit and open to the public after that.
Okay, 'cause I did get a call from a person who teaches the dancing thing, and she was wondering if they could have that, and I gave her name to Derek, and I don't know where they left it at. So would there not be any dancing at six feet, you know, that, that would happen?
That's my understanding, the board was, the board was unanimous in their recommenda- in their recommendation. They, they, they talked about it extensively, and they, they felt that they could not recommend having such an event in these circumstances.
What's the difference between canceling this event and canceling National Light Out, what's the difference?
We didn't cancel National Light Out, the Bob's Department did.
No, he did.
Today, I, I'm just, I'm just rolling this past, today Governor Cooper rolled back from two-point-five to two-point-oh, that indoor gatherings cannot be more than ten, and that outdoor gatherings cannot, uh, will remain at fifty people. I, I'm just throwing that out there, so I don't know if, as a municipality, um, oh, we, we, we have to abide by that? I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know, you might know more chat link about this, but if we have to abide by this as a government entity, I'm just, just throwing that out.
Oh, and I don't know that y'all, I mean, do y'all want me to go in executive session to discuss this and legal parameters, y'all want me to talk about it now?
Do we need to go into play session to talk about this?
I mean, I don't know if y'all want me to.
Disclose the, the concerns from a legal standpoint.
Then, yeah, we need to go into play session to talk about this.
You can postpone this item until after the, uh, closed session if you want to do so.
And, and just go in, when we go into closed session to talk about it, and then come back out and make a decision? Because we're already going into closed session, right?
Yeah.
So we'll just add the closed session to that, and add this to the, that closed session, talk about that, come back out, so we will.
Move this to the.
Move this to the.
The after-play session?
Just new business number one will be after closed session.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, let's do that, and this way we can hear from our attorney on concerns. Um, that said, we're gonna move on to, uh, discussing consideration of solid waste recycling as a municipal service, and authorize administrative receipt with notice of change to vendors pending attorney review. Aye, Christina, this is yours.
It is, and I hope that y'all read the memo, because it's very, very long, but very, um, very important to look at some of these advantages and disadvantages of going into solid waste and recycling. Um, I've crunched some numbers here based off of some conversations that I've had with other local, um, governments that have this service. And what we feel from a staff level is that we could save anywhere from a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars for each of our residents per year that are using solid waste and recycling services already. Um, and provide a greater service that also provides greater service for our roads, safety, those sort of things. So I put in here the advantages, which include, like I said, stabilization of the roads, it reduces the frequency and the number of heavy trucks, heavy trucks that are on the roads. It also gives us some more ability for grant funding, there's aesthetic benefits, which basically means you're not gonna have cans out on the road every single day as opposed to, um, having one day service, there's any given day during, uh, the week now, residents that have different service providers could have cans out on, on the road, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Whereas if we have one service provider, we would have cans out one day. Um, this is also a great benefit for our voluntary annexation plans. The idea for us to provide natural, compressed natural gas trucks would be quieter and safer for our community.
So would we require that in the contract?
We would, yes, yeah, and.
Are they, are they outfitted for that already?
Well, we would, they, we would give them time, I know there's at least one vendor out there that has them currently, I don't know, actually, I know there's two, um, I don't know.
One player, unless the price goes up.
So, um, again, these are just general numbers that we think is, is gonna happen, the disadvantages to this is that citizens would not have the ability to opt out of service. You can't, you're not gonna be able to pick and choose your, your provider, um, and then we'll have an increased number of complaints that are coming in, but we'll be able to hopefully police them a little bit better than they are now. And this would be a joint effort with Weddington, they, they're all on board to proceed. And so I've got, um, some information here about potential timelines, if everyone is on board with this, then we would proceed with the notice of the proposed changes in January, and that would basically start our fifteen-month timeline. We can't start the service until fifteen months after that date of notice.
So they got fifteen months to get prepped and get bids out, and we award the bid within fifteen months. I will say, I mean, when I read the part about handling complaints and stuff, so, just to be clear, you have a problem with your garbage, you're calling the Village of Marvel.
That's right.
Okay.
After this, not now.
No, I know that, I know that, I, I don't know about you, but I'm that guy that calls probably our waste facility twice a month at least, finding out when our service doesn't get picked, so I'm, I'm calling and I'm getting a direct, and she's able to have direct contact with, you know, why they missed, they let me know why it was missed, or they're shorthanded, or whatever the reason is, and when do you expect to have it ready, but we'll have.
We would do that in-house, and we feel like it would be a, a greater service for the community, because we would be able to communicate that message out as opposed to you having to call, like, every resident having to call and say, hey, why didn't my stuff get picked up?
Sounds like you need a new trash service though.
And we would also put greater teeth into the contract, so that the more, you know, I don't know if you guys experienced this at your, your own resident, residents, but here at the village, we constantly get missed pickups, constantly, and so what we would do, and I can only assume that a lot of our citizens have that same issue. And so what we would do with that is we would put greater teeth in our contract, where if that, that was a continuous problem, we would penalize the solid waste vendor, so that it would hopefully reduce the number of times that that happens, so therefore, our citizens would be getting a better service than they are currently now. That is the intent, and that is the, the thought process.
By and large, the municipal trash pickups are much more reliable than private anyway, because they're, they have a specific route, they go from house to house to house, there's no reason to skip, there's not like, oh, I forgot about this guy, or here, or whatever. It's just gonna be a successional thing, unless they have a, a truck break down or something, it shouldn't be an issue. So it should, to clear up a lot of the issues that we have with private vendors.
So are we, are we good moving forward with this?
So.
And I do need to, to work with the attorney to go over some things, because I wanna make sure that once we start, my, my thought process is once we start, we can stop at any point in time, and there's no penalty, but I wanna work with him to make sure that once we start it, we can still pull the trigger if the bids come in higher.
So what campaign are we doing to the community, what do you foresee us doing to, as far as, uh, saying, here, here's our, our idea at fifty thousand feet?
To maintain stability, increase grant funding.
No, 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 I know that, but are we, we doing that just on our, our website, and just another file?
No, we'll submit out something.
Yeah, I mean, we would have no, we, we don't have any intentions of doing any type of survey or anything like that.
No, 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 I know that, this is like, look, the roads are slowly becoming cars.
Do you mean like the flyers we're doing for the interstate?
Whatever it was, how we communicate that to this community, that we are, you are gonna be, um, no longer have a choice on, which essentially is gonna happen, you're no longer gonna have a choice.
Oh, we would get, we would get information out, once y'all decide you wanna pull the trigger on this, and, um, we would get information out to the community and, and stress the benefits, so that.
But we don't have to pull the trigger even though we start the process, we gave the fifteen.
That's what I wanna work, that's what I wanna work tackling on. But if y'all are okay with it, what we'll do is work the next month on proceeding with the notice, which will take place in January, and if that is true, that we can pull the trigger and then stop at any point in time, then we'll proceed with the notice, if y'all are still on board with it, and then we'll get information out to the community.
And this could get to the point where it's another talking point for annexation, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Is everybody, is there a consensus from everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes, I'm good.
All right. Uh, next up, we have, uh, consider call for public hearing to discuss and consider annexation agreement renewed with Weddington to be held on December eighth, six-thirty PM in Village Hall.
December.
Further discussion?
Can I explain what this is about?
Yes, please.
We know what it's about, the annexation agreement with Weddington.
For the public.
Yeah, sure, um, yeah, I just wanted to give a one or two sentences so we know what this is about. Um, we have a twenty-year agreement that will be made with Weddington to not annex on the other side of each other's, you know, the boundary. We made it in two thousand, expires December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, and the idea is that we take the annexation boundary from the, the future land use map, and both us and Weddington renew that agreement. Um, they're having a public hearing on it December fourteenth, and so if, uh, you know, this motion is passed, we'll have ours on December, and we'll have the terms.
We're passing ours, they're passing theirs a couple days later, and then.
Yeah, with the same terms.
Okay, so you guys' staff is working with.
Yes, that's correct, myself and the planner for Weddington are working on an annexation agreement that we'll have ready by then.
Sure. We all good with that?
Yep. Christina?
All right, lead a motion.
I already said move it.
Okay, that was the first of the discussion?
Yeah, those are the discussion, yes.
All right, how old's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have discuss and consider approval of final plat of minor subdivision, application number two-O-dash-one-two-five-one-five, entities three-one-one-seven Waxahom Marvin Road. All right.
Road hits.
Road hit.
All right, so, um, Ross Allen is here, owner of property. At thirty-one-seventeen Waxahom Marvin Road is in the Valhalla Farms subdivision, um, he has eight acres, and he's proposing to subdivide it into two parcels, one is five acres and one is three acres. Um, if you look at the, uh, plat in your, uh, agenda packet, um, the only thing that's, uh, I guess, different about this uh, than the other minor subdivisions you've seen is that there are several non-conforming structures. Those are structures that existed before the time that we had zoning ordinances, and they're allowed to remain non-conforming so long as nothing increases their non-conformity, uh, no, like, future renovations or anything. So in that case, everything else, the, the where's, the place that he's drawn the subdivision line, and the, the, um, the features of the lots, the setbacks that would regulate future development, and, um, et cetera, are all, uh, very much compliant with, uh, the R Marvin zoning district, uh, regulations, and so Planning Board, uh, voted to, uh, recommend approval of this subdivision at their previous meeting, and I would also recommend approval.
So.
And Ross Allen is in the audience, um, here in person, if you wanna ask him any questions.
So, I know a lot of times when you, um, when you're subdividing, especially in a, with an HOA, have they, you gone through the process with the HOA?
I don't, I don't deal with the HOA in pretty much any case, um, I, in, in every case, I ask the applicant to make sure that what they're doing is acceptable by the HOA too, because it's not, it's not my, it's not in my purview to make sure they're following their HOA's rules.
Does anyone have a problem if I invite the applicant to answer questions for us? Um, so I'll ask you, um, did you take it to the.
I reached out to HOA, and they said, um, go here first and bring me the plat.
Okay. And, and, and forgive me, because it's, something similar happened in our neighborhood, I think, if you remember, it was, but it wasn't in Marvin, so they didn't involve us, it was in South Carolina, but it was in our neighborhood, and it was the HOA that had to get it, I think, approved first before it came to, because if we're doing something that's not in conjunction, I, I think, I'm, I even think back to a former councilman that was here, that they have a handful of neighbors, and their lots are in the two, this five-acre lots, and, um, that was always deemed to be that way and stuff, so I'm, I'm worried about, um, and it's nothing against you personally, it's just I know if the HOA doesn't allow it, then, then how do we, and, and you can just, you can point to that.
There's a little.
Chaplin, or, um, Mayor, I'm sorry, if, I guess it's dependent on the applicant itself or the HOA itself, because, and I'm not an attorney, and you can speak with this, but if he is doing something that violates the HOA, that's a civil issue between those two parties, so that would be a separate arrangement that they would have to figure out.
Okay.
In terms of rezoning, we only look at what applies to our own ordinance and how we, we dictate things from that standpoint, really high overarching. The CCRs, the CCRs would be, you know, on his, on his behalf to figure out himself, we wouldn't get involved in any of that.
South Carolina law does have a different provision where you're supposed to look into them if they're damaged, or something like that.
Yeah, and this property that I'm referring to, and that's the only reason I'm bringing it up, was in South Carolina, that it was a three-acre lot, and we allow one acre in Marvin, but this wasn't Marvin, it was on the South Carolina side, and we still only allow one, they wanted to split the driveways and put two lots on three acres, still within our, if it was Marvin, but this was South Carolina.
But the covenants for the profit agreements between the property owners, and those are gonna govern and control, and it'd still be enforceable. So if he has covenants on the property, that say you have to have a five-acre lot, he's gonna have to have a five-acre lot, but the, um, pituitary could enforce.
One unique thing about this property is that it used to be four lots, individual, four individual lots, and at some point, it was recombined into one lot, and now the, the owner is asking to re-split it into two lots. So even in the, even on the plat, it's listed as lots two, three, four, and thirty-two of Valhalla Farms.
Okay.
So, in, in any, in other subdivisions, I've seen, oh, this lot's not allowed to be subdivided, but in this case, it was four lots in the past, so I, I couldn't see why the HOA wouldn't allow it to be at, at most four lots again.
Yeah, but again, that's not, that's not our jam.
Right.
Ours is to, does it work for our?
Yes, yes, and it does, and in, 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 like, in most cases, I, I do have to go through a few rounds of, of revision with the applicant, and this, this one did go through a couple of rounds to make sure that the final plat was compliant, and it is now compliant.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the final plat of minor subdivision, application number two-O-dash-one-two-five-one-five, three-one-one-seven Waxahom Marvin Road.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. All right, um.
Got a question?
Yeah.
Um, so the, the plat?
Yeah, these plats here, um, do you wanna sign tonight or now, or some other time?
I, I can sign them, uh, I, I guess, take.
I'll, I'll come back tomorrow and pick them up.
Yeah, I mean, I will, uh, I, I.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
You should sign all the documents.
Not tomorrow, not tomorrow, Thursday.
Because what's the.
Tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so the day after, Thursday, does that work?
That's fine.
Okay, 'cause I, I think it takes a certain self-tip, and then I've gotta go through, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, right, yeah, it'll, it'll take five minutes.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna, but they call me, and I usually do it, or we do it right after this, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um.
They're very, they're very forward, they're on.
Discuss, uh, number five, discuss and consider adoption of Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee Rules of Procedure.
Basically, this is just putting down what this committee is on paper, it's, a lot of it is, a lot of it is the same regulations we put on the planning board as far as attendance policy, things of that sort. It's pretty much just housekeeping.
Do these guys have to do the ethics thing we're about?
Yes, they've already turned in all their forms, and we'll send them again to do in the first half of the year.
Okay. I mean, I, I read the design, see anything, especially if it's similar to what we already have for Planning Board, and they're kind of a subcommittee in my view of Planning Board, the way I see it. Um, most of their stuff is probably gonna go to Planning Board, I would say. Um, this is just, quite frankly, formed to involve the community and, and, you know, allow us to get input from a variety of different, not just the homeowners and landowners here. Okay, do we have any, uh, changes, or assume the attorney looked at this too, and we're good to go?
All right, so I'll make a motion to adopt the Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee Rules of Procedure.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have discussion consideration, communication topics for December.
Okay.
This is always the hardest part.
So, Austin.
Yes.
You have, that plat is down as twelve-ten, my calendar says it's twelve-eleven.
What is?
Hanukkah.
I don't know, maybe I, maybe I put it down as the wrong date.
No, I mean, it doesn't mean my calendar's not wrong, I just have it down as, I mean, my calendar says twelve-eleven, you know? Might be checked out.
For what?
Just Hanukkah.
Sure, one second.
We can, we can revise it.
I'm just saying, just check it, it's on there, I, I would, I'd hate to say happy Hanukkah, or say Merry Christmas on twelve-twenty-six.
It's begin, begins, begins the evening of Thursday, December tenth.
Can't say Merry Christmas.
You can?
Watch me. Getting. Yeah, me too.
We'll need to put a pin in the tree lighting. We'll need to put a pin in the tree lighting. If we're doing Christmas, Hanukkah, should we do Kwanzaa?
It's up, it's up to you, it's on the calendar?
Yeah, so let's do it, it's twelve-twenty-six.
And Festivus?
Festivus for the rest of us.
Uh, go ahead and.
We bring the poll.
Go ahead and put on Martin Luther King, one eighteen from the morning.
Wait, what?
Martin Luther King.
In that January?
Yeah, but you're doing stuff like early, you've got January days up here.
Well, those are just like the first few days of the year for meetings. Well, I'll bring you a January, full January list in December.
Okay. All right, where's our dot gov and our new website?
Uh, so we are doing website training on Thursday, we're going to go through the process of migrating things to the new website. So basically, it's just a matter of us doing housekeeping behind it and then it's going to be ready to go.
I thought we were going to have it done like October.
It's just taking a little bit longer with programming, programming the website.
Well, let's chop, chop the programmer.
No, they're, it's programmed out, we just got to do the training, get stuff migrated. It's, it's going to be a process, it's going to take probably a week or two just to get everything migrated over. Trust me, I'm going to be spending way too much time doing this.
Do we have our dot gov?
It's going to launch with us and the email addresses should switch over with it at the same time.
Right.
And at that time, I'll go ahead and order any business cards for everybody too, so we can hire, update information.
You guys done with your side conversation?
No, we're just talking about.
Anybody, anybody got a blurb?
Well, a blurb, you know what, I was just thinking, and this happened only because, only because a teacher passed away today, a high school teacher passed away today. And it got me to thinking, and I will announce it in my public comments, but it got me to thinking that when I was in a small town, there would be obituaries of the people who passed in the town and stuff like that. And, you know, it's just something that, you know, I mean, it's funny.
We're not publishing obituaries.
Well, I'm just, you know, when people have, you know, I, I just.
Because if we miss one, people are going to be like, I didn't put my word in there.
Their own misses on that, it's kind of like a newspaper, right? Stuff like that, so. I, it was just a thought, it's just a thought, but I am going to at least acknowledge this.
You tell him that he needs to come up with ideas and he did, don't, don't shoot me down too hard.
Yeah, you shoot me down.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry Joe, you're right, you need to come up with better ideas.
Maybe, maybe, well, we obviously.
She's so cool on that one.
We acknowledge individuals that have been part of the town and stuff like that, so it's, it's fine. I just, you know, I just know that we don't have a newspaper or anything like that. I try and think, what, what small town do you think about what makes your town unique? And that, that was one of the things that people would.
You should start a paper, then you could put the obituaries in there.
Passed.
So one of the good things that Austin is proposing this year is a review, a year-end review. So that'll take some time, it'll be a nice little kind of newsletter.
Basically, it would take her, since, since we don't have that many topics in December, this would kind of take the place of the newsletter for like the last week or two. It'd be kind of a year in review of things that's gone in the village, updating something around about the town hall meeting with photos.
Yeah, that'll spark interest for next year for some of these events that people said, oh crap, I missed that, I wish it had gone. And then maybe they'll attend the spring town hall.
And we could have links to, links to documents adopted that year.
I like that idea and I encourage, I encourage you to move forward with that because I think it's a great idea. I'm trying to create a positive atmosphere with ideals.
Are we going to go on the rest of the show?
She misses that one. Probably good for you that she did.
Nope, but I'm going to go back and look at it at nine fifty.
I thought it'd be at least a good idea for y'all to, to have a good, to highlight the good points of 2020.
I think that's a great, if you can come up with things for December that we've accomplished in this last year and things that, you know.
And I encourage you all, let, if you would like to see certain things in there, to, you know, shoot me an email with a suggestion. So I've got some ideas and.
I know one thing you put on there, approved of the land use plan, that's, that's an accomplishment that's been going on for a couple of years.
Parks and Greenways, Parks and Greenways master plan.
Multiple years.
No, I'm just saying.
I know, I'm not saying couple, multiple years.
It's a big accomplishment, but, and our first town hall, you know, all those things, sum it up. Looking forward to two thousand twenty-one.
Are we good to go on communication?
I am.
Okay.
We done?
Oh, gosh.
Okay, next up, we have discussion of board orientations.
Okay, so this is me, so real quick, so shut your mouth. So for Park Trucking Greenway, for Planning Board, for the strategic, the Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee, people want to volunteer and I love that and I think it's amazing and I embrace that and I'm so glad that they embrace it. But we spend multiple meetings getting people up to speed on what's going on and they ask the questions about all the background. So it was suggested, and I ran it past the Park Trucking Greenway Board, would some sort of like board orientation before you go to your first meeting be helpful, just to get the background? What are the highlights, what's going on, it will take staff time, it's not so much, it's us, I mean, we could be there, like, I could be there for Park Trucking Greenway, Bob could be there for Planning Board. But I think it would be very, very helpful because I know that we have new members and they are like, wait, what's going, like, what's going on? And then they talk about things without having background and it, I feel like, it's like, you know, it's like when you get into this position, you're drinking water from, you know, a fire hose and you can't like, you're only getting a little bit of information, so.
So to that point, I know Planning Board, they have, I don't know who does it, but they have kind of classes.
But that's actually just to be like on a planning board, I'm talking about like our, like, more information, like, what is our, what are, what's the top five things that Planning Board is working on, what are the top five things that?
And we, we normally do that, that, it's just we, when I came on, we fell a bit behind because of everything going on. We just gave the planning.
I was going to say, I don't know that we've ever done.
I don't know that we've ever done it either.
Well, it says, it says in the rules of procedure for the various boards it's supposed to happen.
Okay, well, I don't think that's happened.
But we, but we have taken, we have.
Just have one for Planning Board yesterday.
Perfect.
And we've already done the board of adjustments when they met the last time, we've done the Marvin, we've done the mini. And we're, the only one we got scheduled is PRG.
Okay, good.
It's the last one.
And, and they're open, I mean, they want it.
Yeah, they do.
They just want that information, so I just learned to run it by.
Melinda and Kent, Melinda and Kent loved their orientation, I thought it was very helpful.
Good, okay, so are you guys good with it?
I'm totally fine with that.
I guess it doesn't really matter because it's their rules and procedure, so, okay, good.
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Right, can we hang up the minutes?
Moving on, we have review, consider adoption of minutes from the ten twenty-eight twenty special and ten twenty-nine twenty work session.
I have zero changes for either one of these meetings.
Really, since you guys do not have a work session, that's why they're on here. Do you guys still want to put these on the consent agenda for December or approve them now?
Just approve them now. Everybody got any changes?
I'm good.
We're just on number, October twenty-eighth first.
And then the twenty-ninth, the opt.
And it's ten o'clock for Bob's clock.
That's Bob's extra contribution for the day.
Not fair.
Well, it's not fair.
This is a joke. Oh, gosh.
Okay, so this is twenty-eighth?
Yep.
And you want me to put a twenty?
I will, I will notice, no, actually, I forgot to dock it in the other day, but it slipped by us.
Oh.
But you guys stay on topic, so.
There was only one item on there.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I listened three times.
I swear they're good.
What's that?
The, the motion was suggested but never voted on, or was not, the motion was never, the motion said cannot get it and no one ever, no one said so moved, so the motion was never made.
I'm surprised. Come here.
But you say, you say it on, you say it on topic, so. And I'll make sure, I'll try to be better about catching that, because that's part of my job, catch things like that.
Okay, you have any issues with this one? No, okay, so I want to make a motion to, okay, well, how about the next one, I'll do them together.
Oh, I'm, that's where I'm on right now, I'm good with the first one.
I mean, Bueller, Bueller, anybody, is anybody out there, anybody? I mean, you guys, you're mute today. You're just going to let me just Bueller, Bueller, Bueller you? Cat got your tongue?
Yep. Bless his horn.
Yeah, remember that, Joe, I'm going to tattoo, I'm going to tattoo that on Jamie's forehead so that you can see.
They'll appreciate me when I'm gone. I think.
Anybody any changes for the twenty-ninth? Bob? All right, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from ten twenty-eight twenty special meeting, ten twenty-nine twenty work session meeting.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next up.
Oh, gosh.
We have adoption of ETJ resolution from Wuma. So this was just sent to me yesterday.
Didn't we talk about this?
We, yes, but they actually had a resolution, they printed it out. And this is just, you know, whether you had a chance to read it before you came to the meeting because it came out quick. But it's kind of what Wuma is going to be presenting to Union County. Wuma being the municipalities and Union County being on the other side of how we'd like to see. Now, we're, quite frankly, a lot further ahead in some of these areas than they are. But it doesn't affect our ETJ, what we're doing with Waxahomarvin or anything like that, it just supports what they're. So if you want to take a minute, if you hadn't read it, to read it and if you have any issues with it, otherwise we'll just, we'll prove it. We can let them know that they can move forward with that presenting. We have representatives from Weddington, council member, and Mayor Pro Tem from Wesley Chapel that are basically speaking on our behalf at Wuma for, at two Union Counties, and this is what they'll be presenting, so. Any issues?
Nope.
No, sir.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt RS twenty twenty eleven oh five, a resolution supporting the incorporation of extraterritorial municipal zoning jurisdiction into the Union twenty fifty plan.
You about to do it.
I almost did it, sorry.
Hopefully you can get that all clear on the tape, whatever she says.
Uh huh, I got it.
All, further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have, well, consider adoption, general fund budget ordinance two oh two oh dash one one dash oh two, compensation adjustments per CCOG staffing study.
So this was pulled from the consent agenda because it was basically a double entry into ordinance that y'all had presented that outlined the ten thousand dollars that's being transferred from job, I'm sorry, from professional services to the salary and benefits line items for each respective department. So just wanted to pull that out, but it's just ten thousand dollars that's being, that's being pulled and moved over, it's just a transfer of funds. The way that it read initially was it was basically twenty thousand dollars. So I want to make sure that y'all understood that it was just ten thousand dollars. And the supplemental information that was below was telling you where the ten thousand dollar was going. So that's what that's for.
Want to go prove it?
You do.
Oh, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance, OR twenty twenty eleven oh two, an ordinance amending the general fund budget ordinance.
Further discussion?
As presented.
Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, agenda, review action items, ongoing action item list.
Okay, so Christina and Rohit will work on road policy on aesthetics. We'll reach out to the HOA to let them know about that paint issue. Let's see, I'm going to go Christina Rohit again, I will check on the roundabout funds we're down here, focused on getting lights. I will add to the consent agenda for the next meeting to amend the fee schedule to remove parking pass fees for non-residents. I will send out the meeting schedule for two thousand twenty-one, calendar and that's it all. Christina will continue to pursue the, what was the direction on the parked vehicle?
Christina.
We should, uh. And you will move forward with solid waste collection.
Yep, and that's all I got.
Remind. Remind Joe about the SCRTK meeting and Jamie.
Actually, I worked and I don't have an email of the Zoom and the Zoom.
They usually send them like the week before.
Yeah, that's why I didn't have it on my schedule, I think so.
To block the entire day off.
So here's the issue with that, just so you know, I actually have class that, like, at seven o'clock, so. I don't know when that vote takes place, so you're the alternate for that evening, so you may have to get on that Zoom call. I may be in Idaho. That was not good. Well, I, you know what, I can.
It's the roundabout.
It's next week, I know I'm meeting this week, but that's, so what happens if we have two people that aren't on it? You can't, can't vote on it from Marvin?
No, we'll be missing.
Oh, hell.
No, 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 we can't be doing that.
You're going to get a good certificate.
She, she will drag you there.
A CCD person, perfect, perfect, we're having a fun class.
That's all I need is you teaching the future of our faith.
Yep, bring it on, I'm teaching Jason at home, we're doing at home in our house.
I'll make it work.
St. Matt's at home, that's the room in our house.
I'll make it work, okay.
I am teaching, I'm doing, I am doing faith formation.
Good, that's good, that's good, that's good, I'll make it work, I promise you that. I already have it down on my, I just didn't notice Wednesday nights are not good for me, but I'll make it work.
Make it work, Joe. Tim Dunlop says.
Hopefully the meeting starts at six and we get to that soon enough, I'll just, okay.
Well, the TCC started at ten, we got to that vote at around ten forty-five, ten fifty-ish. If you remember, you were at coffee with council when I was doing that and it was like ten fifty, right?
Right.
So.
Okay, we're good.
I know, but.
I have it on my head, let me know if your travel plans changed.
They could, they could, so.
All right. It's not good to be on a plane, by the way.
Leaving the morning early.
Going to review the ongoing item list?
I almost got killed because they drove on the wrong side of the road. In a little. Are we all good? I'm sorry, we're done this time, all right.
The review of the ongoing list?
Yeah, anything else?
You have any work over this? No.
Any, so no changes to this?
We're making a lot of harder time, it's a good idea.
What's a good idea?
It's ongoing.
Just pointing out, this is, this is shrinking.
You're welcome.
This is shrinking by a lot.
You're welcome.
Helping us accomplish a lot of stuff.
Sorry, I was trying to.
So we don't have to go through this?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, so we are now moving on to council, well, comments, yes. We'll go with the quiet one first.
I'm good. Who are talking about me?
I wasn't. Jamie, what do you, what do you have, anything to say?
Well, I do, I've got two, two points. One is that Joe, great job tonight on doing your, the proclamations and getting that out and making those two families feel very warm and welcome. And to council for bringing that up and pushing it through, so. Great job to staff, as always, I mean, this, this is a lot of information, a lot of stuff. As I always refer to, our law enforcement here that covers and supports Marvin, I wish them to be safe out there. They work, they do a very good job for us and we appreciate that. Last point, this, this past coffee with council. Councilman Vanderburg, not Kim, Councilman Vanderburg and I were in coffee with council and we were approached by, by Chris Smith, came in to visit us. And Chris had mentioned that, you know, because I, I made it very clear when he asked Kim some questions. Kim answered the questions as best she could and referred, he asked my opinion. My opinion was made clear to him that anyone that, that costs my family twenty-five thousand dollars in legal fees and costs my family that kind of money, I have no, I have no reason to talk to them. I, there's nothing that I've looked at and seen that says that I have to talk to a constituent. I, there is nothing that I've looked at and seen that says that I have to talk to a constituent at all. But certainly someone that costs me $25,000, I don't, and I will not, I will go on record as saying that. But my point being, his thing was that he had heard that someone from Firethorn was taking care of my legal costs, and I want to go on record to everyone here, and everyone in the village of Marvin, that I have never received a single penny from anyone. And if you were to ever listen to any of our council recordings, it is a contention with me, because you can run for, you can run for a position that just seems to be very innocent, and just you go out there and you do your thing, and do your civic duty, and it's no fault of your own, you do nothing wrong, everything's dismissed, you, you go through the process, the legal process of challenging an election, and something that should be, as I hear my neighbors on here, let, let's be neighborly as we go through the, the planning, planning, uh, the. And yet, this cost me and my family $25,000, and I'm just gonna speak for myself, and won't speak for Councilman Marklees. But it cost my family, and I'm, and I know that it cost his family $25,000, it's absurd, they, it should, it's shameful, um, but I do want to go on record that I've never received a penny in return, and I'm still $25,000 in the hole, and I've got someone that comes in here and thinks it's funny. Because if I, if I recall, in the conversation, there was a smirk of satisfaction. Well, I haven't received that money, but here's my point, my second point to this. I warn anyone else that will ever in the future in the village of Marvin run for an office, I have to make that warning out there, because if someone doesn't like the outcome, someone has a bad moment, they file for frivolous lawsuit, whether it's fair, whether it's correct, whether it's not, this lawsuit could have cost my family $75,000 to $100,000, but it was dismissed as it should have been. And I am appalled by it, and I do warn anyone else to run, think about it seriously, because there are bad people out there that will take advantage of it. And I'm waiting for my check. As I've said, you got three years of me, like me or not. And if you don't like it, pay me $25,000. And I might shut up, I doubt it. But until then, you got me, and I will continue to fight for restitution, whatever, whatever means I can to recover something that I should never, and Bob Marklees, Councilman Marklees should have never had to do. All we want to be are civil servants in this community, and I got people here going, oh, let's just play neighborly, let's do the land use plan, let's extend it, let's do all this other stuff. It's neighborly until it impacts them. And everyone in this, everyone in the village of Marvin should be appalled at how this rolled out, because they don't know it, but I will, every chance I get, I will let them know until I receive resolution from this. That's my council comment.
Thank you. Jamie? Andy? Uh, I don't have anything to say. Thank you. Kim, I'll go to you.
I'm good.
Mr. Marklees?
Well, I appreciate everybody that participated public today, uh, tonight, and, uh, with that, if we're going into tomorrow, it's Veterans Day, so I want to thank everybody who has served and stood behind that flag that's in the corner of the room, and, uh, just want to acknowledge, uh, everybody that's done so.
Thank you, Bob. Um, for me, you know, I did too, I, I saw how many people were up there for, uh, participating in the meeting tonight, and I appreciate all their comments, and I want you to know, we're listening, I would love a, a venue or more venues, and, and, and they will happen where there's back and forth, dialogue, questions, that sort of thing, um, and I'm hoping that continues to happen like we did in the regular meetings, but thanks for that, and, and I hope in passing this, their understanding of how much work was putting into this, this has not been a rush deal at all. Uh, I appreciate the council's efforts and, uh, Planning Board as well, all their work and efforts over the years of, of getting this to where we, we now have something that's just a guide and not to be concerned, so, uh, but thank you for your comments. On a sad note, I learned before coming here that, uh, Marvin Ridge High School teacher, Scott Zunick, uh, World History, he actually taught my daughter for a short amount of time, and then, um, was replaced, I guess because of his health, uh, he had passed away, he was an Army vet, so, uh, with, uh, Veterans Day tomorrow, keep him in our thoughts, he came from KADA Institute and was with MA, Marvin Ridge High School for a couple of years. Um, the, uh, I, I just want to say that we're, we are listening, I, I had a resident, this is how, how cool this was, and I thank council for this, I had a resident call me concerned about, you know, we're an environmental friendly community, and she literally called and was concerned about the idling and the things, and how fast we were able to turn around, and we approved it today in the consent agenda, so, uh, thank you, Dorada, um, Plague, who's, I think, on one of the committees. She brought that issue up, and, what's that?
The Heritage District.
Heritage issue, she brought that up as a concerned citizen and environment and stuff, and within a short amount of time, I, I actually took a picture of the, uh, proclamation, or the resolution, and, uh, said, hey, things, things can get done, so, um, just another reminder, we're here for the community, and I think with all we heard tonight, we have opportunities twice a month to come in and talk to us about what they'd like to see, and I know some residents took advantage of, the Roses did, took advantage of, they've been here a couple of times, and, and, and we're gonna continue doing it, we're, we're not here to hide anything, we've got, you know, a lot of ideas, ideas are free, but now we at least have a, a, a platform to work off of, and we go from there. So with that, I'm gonna ask to go into closed session of the motion.
Pursuant to NCGS 14331, A.D. 111A3, to consult with the attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to protect the attorney-client privilege.
And also for, um, the, uh, what's the, um, other issue we're talking about?
Under the same thing.
It's, it's no more under the same, okay, I just wanted to make sure we're covering votes, we're gonna vote, all right, uh, further discussion?
Please don't move that, Kim?
I made the motion.
Okay.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we will now go into closed session.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to move back into open session from closed session.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Okay, so now we're to, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
No, that's all right, we have the.
So we're going to the tree lighting, yeah, back to the tree lighting, so I think the decision is to set up a tree and light it on the 12th, somebody will plug in the lights, Joe, you'll go plug in the lights and say, mm, happy holidays, merry Christmas, all that festiveness for the rest of us, and then, um, we will encourage people to drive by in their cars and enjoy it, but we are not having a village sanctioned event.
I would agree, yeah, that, that's perfect, especially if we advertise it like that, so would we just say it, drive by and see the tree, you know?
And maybe explain to the people because of the governor's orders.
Correct.
And the fact of limited groups outside of 50, we are gonna have a.
You got that?
Wait, what now?
You got the notice?
We'd love the council to join me if they can, and we can have.
Should you do a public, a potential forum notice?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I got confused.
Yeah, potential forum notice, but.
Right, yeah.
If you guys are any social, check social event.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then just, just send me that, because I don't.
Just do the forum thing, because you know we're gonna get, oh, man, it's our legal meeting!
So we got that clear, or what?
So light, so it's just gonna be a light the tree, visit at your own leisure event?
Up until through Christmas.
Yeah.
Just at your own time on any day, okay.
And we encourage you to go by, take a.
Extended park hours, though, is what we're going for.
Yeah.
Because it'll have to be.
Well, no, it's dark, dark.
It's dark in.
It's seven, what, what time does the park close in the winter?
Seven, seven.
Okay, it's dark against the clock.
I want to say it's earlier now.
It may be earlier.
Extend the park until eight.
Eight o'clock.
Five o'clock, it gives you all something to.
Can give them a couple hours there.
You know what it is, okay?
Try to cram it in there in 30 minutes, and then.
Eight o'clock.
That's the trade-off, is it, to eight o'clock?
Yep.
What time, what time does that, what time you light it, Tuesday 12th?
We're gonna light it at 5:00.
5:00 PM extended park hour.
And you know what, hey, while we're at it, I don't know if you can do that, I don't know, I was thinking Toys for Tots type thing, drop off a gift.
No, we should have Toys for Tots here, don't we do that here?
It's usually here, yeah.
Drop off a gift before you go over there, take a picture.
That needs to be a word.
Toys for Tots, word, okay.
I came up with it, you didn't.
See, you get one up, every time.
Totally your idea, took right off my idea.
It was right there, you got it.
All right, so are we good with the Christmas tree, do you guys need a motion for that, or are we good?
I think that's just fair.
My sister wrote you.
All right.
All right, I will need a motion to close this beautiful meeting. So, who? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.